I call the committee, the whole meeting for November 16th, 2020 to order. I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Colbrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Present.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, fellas.
You're welcome.
We have to now approve the minutes of our previous meeting from October 19th, 2020. Would there be a motion to approve the minutes or are there any changes to the to the minutes before we do that?
I'll move approval of the minutes.
All right. Who would like to second again?
I'll second.
Okay, Jared Miller. Thank you. Were there corrections to the minutes? Anybody have any corrections? Okay, I don't see any. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
I think we have to do a roll call.
Oh yeah, that's right, we do. Thank you. So, city clerk, please call the roll for us.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, those are approved minutes. Are there additions to the agenda?
I have none. Carol, do we have any?
No.
Okay.
No, okay. All right, so that leads us to presentations and public input. I don't see that we have a presentation this evening. Well, we do. It's going to be later in the in the program as indicated on the agenda as number 11. So if that's appropriate for everybody, we'll just go on to opening up a public input. So I have a statement to read concerning how public input is to be proceed for city council meetings and using Zoom as the media. The city takes public comment via email, written format and verbally. On October 12th, 2020, the Urbana City Council approved new rules for public input during remote electronic meetings. These rules are listed on each agenda for the city-sponsored public meetings. Members of the public may join meetings as either a Zoom webinar or a telephone participant to make verbal input. This is the time for the committee members to listen to the public. Discussion, debate, or commentary will not take place during this period. Public comments are limited to four minutes per person. And public input will tell no more than one hour unless certain or extended by a majority of the members present. The meeting chair has the option of giving priority to speakers who wish to comment on specific agenda items upon which a vote will be taken. A person may speak once during the meeting and not cede time to another person. We ask that you address your comments to the public body as a whole and maintain respect for the process and respect for the members of the city council, city staff, and the general public. The meeting chair member or the public body has the authority of the public body has the authority to call a speaker out of order for using abusive, harassing, or threatening or defamatory remarks. If the speaker refuses to cease the remarks, the meeting chair may mute the speaker's microphone and ask that the speaker please send the remainder of their remarks via email for inclusion in the meeting records. So thank you all the new citizens of Urbana for helping us conduct respectful and productive meetings. As a Zoom webinar participant, you may wish to speak during public input. What you do is to click the raise your hand button, which you'll find at the bottom of your screen, and wait to be called upon by the presiding officer. Please state your first and last name for the meeting's record. For those who are speaking to us by telephone, to raise your hand, you may do so by pressing star nine once, and you will be called upon by the host or the presiding officer. Please state your name, first name and last name for the meeting record. Public comments must be sent prior to the closing of the meeting record at the time of the adjournment, adjournment unless otherwise noted, to the following email address: The subject line of the email must include the words "public input" and a meeting date. November 16th is today's date. Email public comments labeled as such will be incorporated into the public record. Copies or of emails will be posted after the meeting minutes have been approved, and those will help you guide yourself as you do public input with us. So I'd like to see then who are individuals who would like to do public input. I see we have five individuals. And in order that I see them, we'll start, I invite Tracy Gloss to please provide public input.
Hi, good evening. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Good evening. My name is Stacy Gloss, and I am the Chair of the Urbana Sustainability Advisory Commission. My comment this evening is to express my support and enthusiasm to the city for the Lumpkin Family Foundation Grant for Street Trees in Urbana, which will be accepted this evening. The Sustainability Advisory Commission is excited to support the sustainability and resilience offices' efforts on this grant. This is a wonderful contribution toward building healthy and sustainable communities through employing ecosystem services such as tree planting to reduce heat island effects in areas with fewer trees. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much also. All right. The next individual would be Dottie Vero Weiss. Dottie? If you wish to speak.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, you can. We can.
Okay. My name is Dottie Vero Weiss, and I've been a resident of Urbana for about seven years. I'm a member of the Urbana Champagne Friends Meeting, which meets in Urbana on East Main Street. And in September, we approved a statement on police violence that I'd like to read. And I believe that you've already received copies, but I wanted to to read it in addition. And it has relevance to a couple of the issues that are being dealt with this evening and this week. We recognize that the role of the police can be challenging. Even when they deal with difficult situations, they're expected to show respect to every community member in every interaction and to treat each individual equally, regardless of race, or age, or gender, or economic status. We were distressed by the recent violent arrest of a young black woman by Urbana police officers and by other episodes of violence by police against community members, disproportionately against people of color, similar to what has been occurring across our nation. These actions cause both physical injury and emotional trauma to the victims, their families, the community, and even the police themselves. We understand that this is not just a problem of individuals, but that some of our systems accept and may even encourage this violence and racism, which causes moral injury to those who carry it out, as well as the injury to the victim. As friends or Quakers, we believe that every person has that of God within them, some of the divine spirit of goodness and love. We believe that all people should be treated with respect and care. This leads to our commitment to using nonviolent methods to resolve conflicts when they arise, as we do not want to harm others either physically or emotionally. These beliefs also require us to examine our own behavior as individuals and as a group and to speak out when we see injustice, violence, and oppression in the public realm. We must address systemic racism within ourselves, as well as in our social, religious, and economic institutions and in our civil society. We stand in solidarity with those who march and protest against the police violence that disproportionately affects Black and Brown communities and against the complacency of the people in our community who don't object. We're called to hold up the value of each of the people who are suffering from this violence and to work to change the systems that perpetuate racism and violence. In keeping with our values, we encourage city and county officials to take the following steps. Number one, increase police training and de-escalation techniques and include follow-up sessions where body cam and dashboard cam videos are reviewed with officers to discuss what was done well and possible alternatives for each situation that would have better outcome. Two, strengthen civilian police review boards in the county and municipalities by ensuring they have access to all complaints and have subpoena power in order to improve performance and also to give community members faith in the system. Three, develop community forums and other measures to establish effective two-way communication. Four, increase social services in the community to address issues such as homelessness, substance addiction, mental illness, and domestic violence. Five, in addition to having community-based preventive services, strengthen linkages and collaboration between law enforcement and behavioral health programs. The two issues that this relates to would be the use of force policy and also the traffic stop data and the importance of continuing it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dottie. All right, the next individual is Tracy Chong. Would you like to speak?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. I'm going to start tonight with a question. Can we trust the Urbana Police Department and the Chief Seraphin's leadership even with the proposed policy changes? Last Thursday, during the use-of-force listening session, after months of denying any misconduct, Brian Seraphin admitted that Officer Eric Graff's handling of his rifle was a violation of policy during the Elia Lewis arrest. The public had been right all along, but this admission only happened after a concerned resident took their time to actually look at the evidence presented, something that UPD failed to do. Even then, it took prodding from residents, week after week, before Seraphin finally decided to say something. Seraphin should immediately issue a formal press release acknowledging the misconduct, acknowledging the failures of UPD's own internal investigation, how this failure came to be, and how the changes proposed ensure that this failure does not ever happen again. Mayor Marlin used $20,000 of taxpayer dollars for an external review that was also a failure. Hillary Heinz gave the thumbs up to UPD's review, which the public knew was flawed. Mayor Marlin needs to address the fact that up to today, there has been no meaningful review, I repeat, no meaningful review, performed for the Elia Lewis arrest. Seeing that the public trust in the police department is so broken at this time, I find it astounding that we are once again trying to lessen civilian police oversight. Carol Mitten's latest actions regarding the civilian police review board have been the opposite of transparent. Why did Carol Mitten give a presentation to city council without the CPRB, without consulting CPRB members on its contents? Carol Mitten made some rather bold claims about the complaints and appeals costing $42,220,000. Carol Mitten then proceeded to say, quote unquote, "We do not track the number of hours that we spend." Gosh, if I were to claim in public that something cost $100,000, like what Carol Mitten did, I had better bring my receipts. Regarding Carol Mitten's CPRB presentation on October 26th, I'm still curious why Mayor Marlin told the public that the scheduled appeal hearing was canceled due to the appellant and CPRB members having scheduling problems. Did Carol Mitten lie to Mayor Marlin about the actual reason? Did Carol Mitten try to cover up the reason that the hearing was canceled?
Chairman?
Because Mitten herself did not follow procedures mandated by CPRB ordinance?
All right.
It is concerning that Carol Mitten believes-
Be sure to be more respectful.
I wish to continue. It's concerning that Carol Mitten believes she's exempt from the procedures mandated by CPRB ordinance. At the same time, Carol Mitten is urging city council to amend the ordinance so that procedural or administrative complaints will be excluded from the CPRB complaints and appeals process. From Carol Mitten's proposed changes to the CPRB, it was clear that her main goal was to make sure certain types of complaints were ineligible to go through the appeals process. This is a terrible move by-
Let's try not to be too opinionated and try to stick to facts, please.
These, I think these are facts. Sorry, you really interrupted me. I think this is a terrible move by Carol Mitten that would lessen civilian oversight on some of the-
These are opinions. These are opinions.
Yeah, they are. Okay, of course, the public can express opinions, and we are doing better. Thank you, Tracy. You're doing a little bit better. Thank, we appreciate your civility. Perhaps the content's not exactly perfect, but thank you for trying. All right, the next person up is Mr. B. Dunn, 545425@gmail. Maybe you could express your name, and we open your public opinion or public comments.
Hey, my name's Brian Dunn. I'm from Champagne. And yeah, I just brought my dog in from outside, and it's really cold outside, you know, which is kind of an opinion, but something I think I could state here. And it gets me thinking that I hope that our community is doing everything possible to keep people in warm houses with running water. And if there is any ability, that any motion you can make would either influence or cause that to be a certainty, that would be amazing, because as someone who is immunocompromised, I can't imagine the terror I would feel being uncertain of those conditions going into these winter months, knowing that to seek shelter with someone else or in a group setting would put me at great risk as our numbers creep up to, you know, close to 10%. Those are not good odds. And, you know, sorry if these are opinions. I'm not really sure after that last comment what I'm supposed to be doing here, but I just hope to express to you that it is imperative that you do everything possible to take care of your community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dunn. All right, the next individual with the raised hand is Bo Barber. Bo?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. So last time I talked about no Amarin shut-offs and the number of disconnections in September, which occurred over the period of one week, Urbana had 47 disconnections by Amarin. We have an update now for the data from October, and there were, for Urbana only, there was 227 disconnections by Amarin Illinois. In addition to this, there were 83 disconnections by American Water in Urbana alone. This is getting worse, and I'm working with CUPHD and Cunningham Township via Daniel Chenoweth as best as I can, but this is just an endless tide of disconnections that are going to be occurring. And I've worked with them to try and reach out to people and figure out, you know, get in contact with people, try and point them to the right direction so they can get the financial aid they need, talk to Amarin to get something set up. Amarin purposely sends us notices, notifies CUPHD, notifies them basically less than 24 hours in advance of when they're going to potentially disconnect services for people. And out of, just from November 1st to November 16th today, Urbana has received 181 disconnection notices. And every other day I get more. They switch between Urbana one day and Champagne the next. And I'm exhausted, and I'm not sure how much I can keep going fighting this losing battle. And coming up in December, that winter moratorium that I used to even think was going to be an end-all-be-all is not an end-all-be-all. It's a means-tested thing like we currently have now. What we have here is a means-tested program with Amarin still shutting people's off. They shut off 227 people. It's a means-tested program, and it is actually, the winter moratorium has weaker protections. This is not going to be solved by the governor. It's not going to be solved by the winter moratorium. It's going to come down to the local governments. And that's why I'm pleading with you. You have the power to act. You passed the resolution promising that you would act, and I understand there's things you can, you know, to settle out, but we're not, we don't have time. That's not a luxury. I've worked with organizers. People have found homes abandoned because they've lost their water and they've lost, they've lost their power. And I know that because these people have gone to houses that they know people lived in. There was stuff still in the front yard. And these people went by these places over the course of three different days, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and no one was there. They went different hours of the day. Those people were gone. And it's going to get worse as people abandon their homes to find shelter elsewhere during a pandemic that spreads like a wildfire. And so you, I know you've received an email today that explained what you can do. You can act on this immediately, and you can, whether for whatever period of time that you can do it, you have to do it. I'm begging you, because people are going to die because of this. And I can only do so much with organizers that I'm working with. Daniel Chenoweth can only do so much. And we're just, we're trying, but you need to act, and you need to act now, because this is going to get bad, and it's already bad, and it's going to get worse. But thank you for letting me comment.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I do believe we are putting, going to address something about that eventually here, and we hope to share that with you. There is also, I wanted to comment that the city offers a list of immediate assistance resources on the city website for Urbana rental mortgage and utility assistance through the township and through different organizations in the community. And I encourage anybody who has an issue with their services to please use those resources if they are able to. All right, Grace Wilken, your turn to speak for public input. You have four minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Grace Wilken. I'm an Urbana resident. And I want to talk about the discussion item today. And this report shows that, you know, we have some blatant racial discrepancies in our police and policing, and that these are deep issues that need to be addressed. I'm concerned about the pilot program. It seems really vague. Sounds like officers can arrest or do traffic stops for any reason within this area and also outside of this area. It just doesn't make sense to me. And I think that it's not meaningfully addressing the deeper issues of how we support our communities and how we deal with racial issues and police accountability. And there are a lot of deep issues here that go along with traffic safety and community safety. I also want to talk about item seven, this grant for tree research and tree planting. I think that's a great thing and really important to do. And that's great that our city staff was able to get that grant through and accepted from the foundation. And I'm also wondering if the combined almost $10,000 additional pay to city staff from the city is necessary. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but just a question I wanted to ask if that's within the scope of their full-time job already or not. Just something to think about with the pandemic and economic hardships. And then another item I want to talk about was continuing to work on preventing utility shut-offs, whether that's pressuring state and county governments, the utility companies directly making emergency orders, whatever needs to be done to try and keep people safe and as housed as possible. That's all for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Grace. Next up, we have Ellen Axelrod. Ellen?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Could you put up the clock, please? Thank you. Hello from Bloomington. Today, the Bloomington City Council has voted unanimously to start to prepare action on utility shut-offs. Next week, they are going to have an in-depth discussion with their legal staff about what additional material they can add to their ordinance in order to act. That took one discussion. How long has it been with you all? I appreciate that you have acted. But Bloomington isn't exactly a progressive town. They're in the middle of also a Republican county. So what I want to emphasize here is that it is very clear, even in the definition of emergency services in 20ILCS 3305, the whole state statute, which is called the Illinois Emergency Services and Disaster Agency Act, that the emergency services includes in their definition the temporary restoration of public utilities. Amarin Illinois, Illinois American Water, all of the rest of the major corporations are public utilities. The Illinois Commerce Commission regulates public utilities. The email that you were sent this morning specified very clearly how the existing ordinance, not a new ordinance that needs to be adopted, allows for these emergency powers, which again, are not enacted by ordinance, but enabled by emergency statute so that one can act through the Emergency Services and Disaster Agency. Decatur is one of the most significantly affected communities in addition to Springfield. They have had hundreds more disconnections this past month of October. Their positivity rate is up to 20%, and that's before evictions even hit. That's coming for us next. And if we do not do everything that we can, again, proactively, we are going to be in a much more dire straits. That also being said, I know that this is difficult. With our General Assembly effectively disbanded and with the governor not calling them back into action, he unilaterally governs who gets what sort of emergency funding. I would ask that the budget be secondary to the safety of our residents, because while we can make up debts in the future, we cannot bring people back from the dead. And I'm speaking to you very plainly, because that is where things are at. Last time I had checked, we had over 4,000 people on ventilators in our state. The death toll is around 10,000 plus. Most people who are on ventilators do not come back. Our death toll is going to mount. And again, evictions are about to happen. And not every county is like Champagne County, where the Public Health District Administrator Julie Pride agreed to talk to Sheriff Dustin Hearnman to stop evictions, just like he had promised to do back in March or April, and hasn't promised again since. So please, more than words, we need you to use the emergency powers that you have available. We are running out of time in Champagne County. Even NPR said earlier that this weekend, we have had the highest number of COVID cases cumulative since the pandemic has started. We're running out of time. Please act.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Ellen. Are there any other individuals who would like to participate in public comment at this time? I'm trying to recall if there had been any public comment- public comment offered via email today. Certainly, there was one or two concerning one of the cases, the zoning, the zoning Board of Appeal or the zoning issue that we're gonna be talking about in our future here. So, um, all right, okay.
And I think.
Yes, I see Evelyn Underwood. Yeah, I call upon you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Good evening, everyone. I sent a short email. Uh, and so let me read that quickly. Uh, the chief's recommendation, twenty-twenty-one pilot program, quote, colon, Bishop King James Underwood and I, Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, would like to go on record as supporting Mr. Daryl Cruz's draft resolution authorizing police, policing change, changes to improve equity in traffic stops, practice and tactics. We believe that this will put the Urbana City Council on record committing to the change needed. The twenty-twenty-one pilot program is a good first step. Um, I, well, it's a good first step, but we need a more comprehensive program, which is clearly defined in the draft resolution that Mr. Cruz submitted. Thank you for your consideration. Now, uh, I would just like to say there's a lot, I would like to say that twenty-three-page document, uh, we've gone through that. And we see in the latter part, especially, you know, I'm not a statistician and, but we can see in plain view and eyeballing that, um, the disparity, you know, so we can see that. And, and we know about implicit bias, not evil, but implicit bias. I know about the training and all that. You know, we've been at this a long time, a long time. And I can see with Mr. Cruz's, uh, uh, document and also the, the two-page informational piece that the chief gave to the mayor, the memo that seemingly, don't you agree, Bishop, that, um, it's, it's a good first step? I would like to say further that, um, we need to have maybe a Bishop had a name for it. What did you call that? Well, a short, I can't, I don't have that. What he called it, a dashboard report quarterly uh, uh, by race to the, to the public and to the council to, uh, just so we won't forget. And that's one reason that we need something in writing. I don't think we read it for an ordinance or anything of that nature yet, but a policy resolution. So, um, it'll be in front of the council, in front of the people that, uh, this is very serious and we need to do something. And as I forestated, that first step uh, is a good step, but we need a more comprehensive uh, uh, document. And I think what we are supporting and others, and what we talked to, people we've talked to that's supporting is something that the council could do. Thank you very much.
Hey, Dr. Underwood, thank you for your commentary. Okay, I don't see other raised hands at this point. So I guess we're gonna close now public input for this meeting and go to the other parts of the agenda. So is there a staff report?
I do have.
Do you have one, Mayor?
Yes, I have, I have a number of items. First of all, I wanted to repeat the announcement that the vacant city council Ward Two seat is available for people to apply for that. If they go to the city of Urbana's homepage, there's a link to the application. We'll be taking applications until November thirtieth. The person who is appointed to this seat will fill the seat until the next council is takes their seat on May sixth. So again, on the homepage for Ward Two, applications are being taken for city council seat. Number two, I wanted to thank everyone in the public who participated in our use of force listening sessions. There were three separate sessions last week. We are still taking comments on the Urbana's use of force, the police use of force policy. They can email that to useofforcepolicy@urbanaillinois.us and those comments will be taken until five PM Monday. We had a, you know, we had a reasonable turnout over those three sessions, both from organizations and individuals who made suggestions. One of the themes that emerged was clear was that we need to have very explicit, and we know this, and that's what's going to be incorporated, language regarded regarding de-escalation. But we also got very, you know, a number of other good comments. Participants were able to speak for five minutes each multiple times. We had time for question, Q and A. So, you know, it was a reasonable, it was a reasonable experience and we hope to do more of those. And I just, again, want to thank people for participating. Third, the, I wanted to talk about where we are with our response to the pandemic. This week, we've reached, well, in the past couple of weeks, we reached really a terrible milestone, the one that no one wanted to reach back in the spring, and that was sustained community spread. So I've been on a number of calls with public health leaders, with, with the governor's staff, et cetera. We are at the point where there's sustained community spread, which means this virus is everywhere. And people need to assume that everybody they come in contact with could very well be contagious. This is a very different situation than we were in even a few, a couple of months ago, certainly in the spring and summer. And it's not where we want it to be, but we're here, so we have to respond accordingly. Our positivity rate has increased. On the governor's call today, he reported, he reported that there were fifty-two hundred patients hospitalized in Illinois. And that's a seventy percent increase compared to two weeks ago. So we are, we are dramatically increasing our hospitalizations. Eighty-one deaths, over eleven thousand people have died in Illinois. What the governor pointed out today also was that we have no reserve healthcare workers waiting in the wings. Back in the spring and summer, people had signed up from other parts of the country to come help Illinois if we needed it. We don't have that option anymore because every part of the country is in the same boat. That's what sustained community spread means. So those reserve healthcare workers are not available to help us here in Illinois. And our own healthcare workers are, are, are exhausted. And we are close to meeting or exceeding our hospital capacity. We've made, we have plans in place for surge facilities. But really, you know, this is dependent on the, the ability of our healthcare workers to stay on the job and stay healthy. And again, we have to assume everybody is infectious. And that is why the messaging has been just continuous about holiday gatherings, avoiding gatherings. It's, you know, the, the spread is coming from private gatherings and it hasn't, you know, our, our own employees aren't immune from this either. So the, the spread is starting to affect city staff as well. We've responded, we're moving into A and B teams where some employees are on duty one day and another group are on duty another day. That's true in police and also in public works. We have more people being sent home with computers to work remotely. There's a point where we may see an impact on city services. So I ask the public to be very patient and to be to be patient if this happens because our city staff is being infected, you know, impacted by the virus as well. There's been, we have been on the, the, the utilities and evictions. Governor announced that the eviction moratorium for Illinois had been extended. But there are some changes that were made as of November fourteenth. And it's, it's kind of disturbing that these changes happened. Landlords can file evictions unless tenants give them a written declaration that they should be protected due to reasons related to COVID. So there now has to be a written statement by tenants that they're directly impacted by COVID in order to avoid an eviction. We just got this information today, still digesting it, trying to figure out what this means for how we respond locally, but that, that is new. Um, I, we've received information regarding the utility shut-offs. We are exploring all our options. It's not as simple as people think from a legal standpoint. The ICC has, has stated that they believe, and they are the authority for regulating utilities. And when local governments take action, there are consequences. So we have to explore what those consequences are. I know how people feel. I know how desperate some people are. And we will work, do whatever we can and as hard as we can to keep people in their homes. So we're just trying to sort all this out right now. And I, I will be calling the mayor of Bloomington to see exactly what route they're taking as far as a local ordinance. I want to reiterate again how important it is for people to not gather over the holidays, to not gather in private homes. That's where the spread is happening. It's not so much in the schools, it's not so much in other places, but it's in the private homes where people feel safe. They feel like they can meet with a few family members, a few friends. And the reality is, everybody has the potential to be positive, and they are in many cases. And, and we're seeing the result of that. So when you have people getting sick, two weeks later, you get people in the hospital. A couple of weeks later, you start to see the deaths. So we are starting, you know, we're just at the beginning of, of, of some very, very sad times. And we need people to change their Thanksgiving plans, change your travel plans, stay home, stay apart, and figure out an alternative way to celebrate the, the holidays. Because this, this is a very, very critical period. The vaccines that have been developed, there's another one announced today. It will be months, it will be months before those can be distributed and before we start to see an effect. So we're looking at, you know, we're looking well into twenty-twenty-one before we see any relief. And, and we need to keep as many people safe as possible. So I'll keep, I keep folks updated. Specific, I can tell you about local ordinances on utilities, but we're, we're, you know, our options are. But it, but, but again, the state also has a great deal of power in this regard. And I really, I'm going to be on a call with Governor Pritzker tomorrow, and they're going to be announcing new mitigations. And I will bring up the issue of utility shut-offs and evictions with the governor's staff tomorrow and the governor on this call. And last, I wanted to let you know that we're working on a virtual holiday market. Darius White, who's come on board as of today, will be helping coordinate that. And, and it will be an opportunity for people to shop safely and to support our local business. Because when you support local business, you support local jobs and families and, and keep food on the table and keep people in their homes. So we're doing everything we can to support our local businesses as well. So that's, that's my report for today. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mayor.
Can I ask Mayor the question, Mayor the question?
Yeah, go ahead, Mary Alice.
Thank you. Diane, I'm wondering, and people have talked about the city of Champaign's ordinance on utility shut-offs. Are you aware of the city of Champaign taking action against the utility company since we're having both termination notices both in Champaign and Urbana?
I'm told that their legal division believes they do not have the authority to do that on a local level.
So at this time, to the best of your knowledge, the city of Champaign is not, is not taking anything into the city's hands in terms of?
Well, I wouldn't speak, I wouldn't go that far, but all I know is, last time I asked, I believe they, they, they said they did not believe they had the authority to act under that particular part of their code. It's a, it's a really, it's not a simple, it's not simple at all. It's very complicated to do this on a local level. So that's why we need to, we need to do the research in order to determine this. And I know, I know people, I know time is of an essence, but we also have to be able to do the research to do this.
Yeah, I mean, in, in my opinion, it's one thing to have an ordinance and it's another thing to have some kind of enforcement mechanism. So I'd be very interested in any communities that have been successful in those enforcement mechanisms.
Well, we're trying to find out. So far, we haven't found any. That's, that's the issue. It's, it's that's why I, you know, in an ideal world, this would happen on the state level.
All right.
That's where, that's where the authority, that's where the Illinois Commerce Commission is, and that's where the authority lies. And that's why I'm going to make that point with the governor again tomorrow.
Bill Brown, did you have a comment?
Um, just similar to that, I wondered if, if you'd had any conversations with John Dwyer, Emergency Services. I think Alan mentioned that the ES, that's, uh, had some authority to to prevent shut-offs.
That's one of the conversations we'll have, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, would if we enacted something, is, uh, is Legal Department concerned that there might be a suit against the city by a utility if we enacted such a?
I'll let Jim speak to that, and the answer is yes, but here you go.
I would merely back up exactly what the mayor says. Yes, that suit could be very expensive. It would pit, obviously, private utility companies against Urbana. My research is consistent with the mayor's. I have yet to find a municipality in Illinois that has enacted one, a, a moratorium on a private utility. Uh, I have spoken directly with legal in Champaign, and I have been advised they do not believe they have the authority. And indeed, people have represented to them that Urbana has a legal authority. I have today gone through the Illinois Emergency Services Act. Thank you, Councilmember Miller, for the quick site. So I didn't have to, I knew that we had one. I didn't want to have to dig, but I, in fact, I just went through it a second time just before this meeting. And that is the act that authorizes the governor to issue the executive orders that he has. The act does refer to public, uh, political subdivisions and municipalities and cities. But as I read the act, nowhere does it confer the authority on them to act independently to issue private utility shut-off moratoriums. Further, echoing what the mayor said, I have communicated now twice with the Illinois Commerce Commission attorneys in that division, and they indicate as far as private utilities, that municipalities do not have that authority. And that has been bolstered by IML's Illinois Municipal League Attorney's opinion. He does say that publicly-owned utilities, that municipalities that own utilities have the right because they own they're public utilities that they own and operate, but not private.
Jared, Jared Miller?
Thanks, Dennis. Um, well, I'm, I'm curious, I don't, is Ameren a privately-owned utility? Is it not publicly-owned?
Well, it may, it's, when I mean privately-owned, I don't mean like a family owning it. I mean, it's an entity that is not owned by a government. Same with Exelon, same with Commonwealth Edison, same with Illinois American Water. They are, they have investors, shareholders. I don't know if Ameren's traded on a public. I don't know if Ameren's traded on a public, you know, securities exchange, same with Illinois Water. But that wouldn't matter anyway. They are privately owned utilities. They are not government owned, nor are they government operated.
Okay, I mean, I guess I I, I don't know, if the if the distinction is between public, a public company and a private company, I think they're sorry to be there. Anyway, Jim, what I wanted to say was, you know, I know, yes, there is, obviously, if we're in violation of the law, there's there's threat of lawsuits. But, you know, in my opinion, and probably in the larger opinion of of the public, you really think that a privately owned utility company is going to sue a municipality for not letting them perform utility shut offs during a pandemic? That would directly be contributed to the people, the death of people in that municipality? You really think they're going to sue them and be like, you should have let us kill people? Are we, that's the law, we're allowed to do it. You really think that, I'm not trying to be just, well, I'm just saying, I really don't see that actually coming to fruition.
Unfortunately, maybe I'm more of a cynic than most, but I do see that, and I'll explain why. One, they won't look at it the way you or I might look at it. And two, they're going to set a precedent because we have obviously hundreds, if not thousands, of different units of local government. And if they all start adopting their own moratoriums, then, you know, at some point, they basically shut down the utility. So I think to a stat, if we're the first, they will come after us. And here's how it will work. Obviously, if we adopt an ordinance and they violate the ordinance, we would have to prosecute them in ordinance violation court, just like any other ordinance. They would respond with a suit or with a counterclaim for declaratory relief. And if we're way out on a limb and we have no legal basis, and at this point, I don't, you know, we have, may have moral basis and ethical basis. But the way I read the various statutes I've read, I don't, I honestly don't think we have a legal basis. The city not only will have to, you know, basically pay somebody to handle this very complex matter, but there's a good chance the city could get hit with sanctions, which would include paying the utilities attorneys. And it could be a very expensive piece of litigation that could grind on for some time. So unfortunately, I would rather be more idealistic. But in my 44 years of doing this kind of stuff, you know, plaintiffs or organizations like that do this to set a precedent as much as deal with the particular issue. By the way, ICC and the utilities, including Ameren and Illinois Water, have entered into a voluntary moratorium arrangement. I don't know when it expires. And further, as we head closer to winter, and I think it's to December one, there's a statute, if I recall correctly, that prohibits shutting off heat because somebody can't afford to pay. There are metrics in terms of when they can do that and when they can't.
Well, in 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 any case, I know we're talking about it, but, you know, at some point, we can and get a response to that specific language that I that I had cited in there that would be appreciated just because I feel like there is legal wiggle room in that language that would allow us to do that. You know, if you see language in there that says that says otherwise, you know, I I do recognize that there's not like a direct line that says municipalities can regulate utilities. And that's really, you know, really what you're you're looking for in those things. But, you know, I'm also not, you know, just as much as you could say that you don't see where that is written. I don't see where it is not written. I don't see where it's explicitly prohibited either. So I think the argument could be could be made both ways from the from the statute. Yeah, maybe it's not explicit that we can, but it's also not explicit that we can't. And that that would be my my legal, you know, let's look into that as well.
Well, if I'm directed to do that by the mayor, I will gladly do that.
Okay, maybe this topic will come back to us as an agenda item in the future. But thank you, Mayor, for the staff report and the comments. We'll go now into the agenda items specifically. Starting with number six, Resolution Number 2020-11-059R. A resolution estimating the tax levy for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. And we have perhaps Elizabeth Anna here to help us through this.
I I am here, and I'm gonna run through a few quick slides here, so let me share my screen.
Okay.
Okay, are you seeing that now?
Now we are.
Okay. All right, so as 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 we said, we're here to talk about the 2020 property tax levy. And if I can get it to flip the slide. Okay. So I'm just gonna run through a few basics on property taxes here. For anybody who hasn't been through this before, or perhaps for members of the public who are not familiar with this. In Illinois, properties are assessed at one third of fair market value. That's called the equalized assessed valuation. Proper, various properties may have exemptions that reduce the taxing value. The most common one is the $6,000 exemption for owner occupied properties. So the taxing value is the assessed valuation less the exemptions. And that's the basis for calculating taxes for a particular property. So as an example, if you live in a $150,000 home, that's assessed at one third of market value or $50,000. If the home is owner occupied, that additional exemption reduces the taxing value to 44,000. And that would be the amount used to calculate the tax bill. So each taxing district, the city, the school district, the park district, et cetera, levies their own taxes. The county calculates the total tax rate for a particular property by adding the property tax rate for all of those individual taxing districts that are applicable to that property. For most properties in Urbana, the city's property taxes are about 13% of the total tax bill. Also worth noting, the taxes taxes that we levy now in 2020 will be received by the city in calendar year 2021. So here's a quick look at kind of how the property tax bill in the city of Urbana breaks out. This is for the the 2019 tax levy, the revenue that we're collecting now. And as you can see, schools are about 55% of the total. That's the largest piece of the pie. The city is at 13%, parks at 12%, the county at eight, and and everything else is, you know, smaller than that even. So looking at our assessed value over time, way back here in 2009, we were close to 600 million. And then you can see we we had a big decrease when the hospitals came off the tax rolls. And then over time, we've been gaining a little bit. In 2018, we had a little blip when the OSF properties were added back to the tax rolls, but then they were later removed. That's the blue part. And so now in in 2020, we're looking, we're estimating that we'll be a little bit above 600 million. So for a particular homeowner, the amount of taxes that they pay for the city varies, of course, based on the value of the property, but anywhere from about $369 annually for a property valued at 100,000. I've got a couple of increments in there, but up to about $1,000 a year for a property valued at 250,000. So for this year's tax levy, the mayor is recommending that we maintain our current tax rate, which is $134.99. We'll talk a little bit about the details, but we levy taxes for four different purposes. So we levy taxes for police pension, fire pension, for the library's operations, and for corporate purposes, which is the the remaining part that goes into the general fund to pay for services like police protection. So the library tax levy is important because the library is very dependent on property tax revenue. It's the vast majority of their of their revenue. So the proposed levy for the library is 3.515 million. And that's based on the budget that city council reviewed for FY21, the current year. That's the amount of revenue they need to make that budget work. So that's an increase of about 1% from the current tax levy. That sounds low, but they had a relatively large jump jump last year. And they had some one time expenses in last year's budget. So so this is the number that makes their budget work. Police and fire pensions will total together about about 3.3 million. And that funding is based on the funding policy that was approved by the city council in May of 2018. So our funding goal is to fully fund those, is to get 100% funded within 20 years. We are in the midst of a five year transition plan to get us on that path. And this is the third year of the five year transition plan. So this is a $413,000 increase from the 2019 tax levy. That's a large increase, but again, we're we're ramping up to get on that 100% funding path. And we'd expect to have one or two more years of fairly large increases, and then the increases should kind of level out. The corporate levy is basically going to the general fund, it's whatever's left after we do with those other portions of the levy. And we adjust that downward generally to maintain that stable tax rate. So based on maintaining the same tax rate, that is going to decrease about 280,000 or 16%. And that's consistent with the financial forecast. We knew that was coming because of the increases in pension funding. So here's just looking at time at the tax levy and the different components. Looking at what we're proposing, the libraries down here in purple, the pensions up here, kind of a similar amount in green. And then the corporate tax levy, the general from general fund part up here, which, as you can see, has been getting smaller. Well, since about 2016. So in order to complete the tax levy process, we will ask you to adopt the estimated levy next week. We do not expect that we will be required to hold a public hearing because the increase will be less than 5%. However, we always welcome public input. And citizens may comment at that meeting or at later, the later meeting when we approve the tax levy. We would bring the final tax levy to council on December 14th. You would see the tax levy ordinance, an abatement ordinance to to abate the bonds. And then we would also have a an abatement of the corporate levy to get us to that targeted tax rate of $134.99. So if we if we overshoot because we're estimating assessed valuation, that's that's where we would reduce the tax levy. So that's the short version of tax levy. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, so does anybody have a question for for Elizabeth concerning this? I've got one, Elizabeth. Obviously, the diagram you showed us, I guess I could mention two things. One, the library does not have the power to levy its own property tax. There, I don't know if that would ever be an agreement that it would ever be reached among the corporate, the entities that that collect the property tax. I don't know if that discussion has ever occurred. But the city supports the library through property taxes, but not, the library doesn't do it directly. We see that the 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 burden of the pension fund continues to grow. Will there be a time in the future where it begins to stabilize or shrink? Or will the pension always grow in this community?
Well, always is a long time. But as as I said, we're in this five year transition period to increase our funding. So what what we do know is that if we don't somewhat aggressively fund our pensions, in the long term, it'll, it will cost us more because our unfunded liability will grow and grow and grow. And essentially, we're paying interest on the the amount that we didn't pay earlier. So, you know, we had a lengthy discussion about this in 2018, and we adopted a new policy that includes this more aggressive funding approach. So I would expect, so in the five year transition plan, and this is year three, we should, we'll see another pretty healthy increase in year four. We're completely expecting that. Year five is kind of our flexibility because it's it's sort of a moving target where we might have, we might or might not have another fairly large increase. And then after that, the increase, there should, it's going to increase every year, but it should stabilize somewhat.
Is it ever based on the number of officers that we or or firemen that we maintain in the community?
Sure. So each year we have an actuary who who does an actuarial report for each of those funds. And it's based on, you know, the the number of police officers and firefighters, what we expect the wage increases to be. It's 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 pretty complicated. They even have, you know, tables for, you know, how many people do we expect to be disabled? And at what age, when do we expect people to die? They have mortality tables that go into those calculations. What do we expect our investment returns on the pension fund assets to be? So all of all of those things, you know, go into that that calculation to help us determine what the funding needs to be.
So a lot of these, that a lot of these obligations are extremely long term for us. As long as a policeman is serving or collecting a pension following a retirement. You know, we have, I can't remember how many officers we have on hand. I think it's what, 59 or something like that, officers?
That's that sounds roughly right. It's in the 50s, I believe.
The 50s, yeah, okay.
58.
58, and then, of course, whatever term of term of retirement that they serve until they pass is we're obligated to fulfill that pension.
Correct. Now, the legislature did some years back implement a tier two. So so I I'm forgetting the exact date that the transition happened. But all the officer officers hired prior to to a certain date received, I would say, a better benefit package than officers hired after that date. And officers, officers currently being being hired have to work longer. And that, you know, the pension benefits are a little, a little different.
Okay, thanks. Other questions, other questions, Sharice, then Bill.
Have we, has the city ever paid 100% pensions before?
So it's not that we're we're paying 100% of the pensions. It's that we're working on a goal to have it 100% funded within 20 years. The reality is, as even as we get closer and closer to 100% funded, and you you should see that gap start to close, we should go from where we are now, which is, I don't know. Well, it varies by fund, but, you know, 70s to 80, 80%. You'll see that gap get smaller. So, you know, at some point, it's going to be 85 and 90 and 95. But but because it, the contributions are recalculated every year, and there's so many things, so many factors in play. You know, we may never be exactly 100%. You know, we may be, there may be some years when we're a little better than 100%. There may be some years when we're a little lower. But but yes, it's, I mean, I think it's achievable.
No, I don't know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm asking the wrong question. What we pay into the pensions now is more than what we've paid before? I guess it's.
So yet, so yes and no. At one time, prior to about 2015, we were funding at, funding it based on 100% funded over 20 years. And then then I want to say around 2015, the mayor at that time made a decision to decrease funding for the pensions in order to to direct resources elsewhere in the budget. The budget was was very tight at that time. But when we came back later and and took a thorough look at what the law But when we came back later and and took a thorough look at what the long term implications and cost of doing that were. We sat down in twenty eighteen and we we did a presentation on that to the council. And I also, at that time, I had an actuary with me there to to talk about some of the details and the council adopted the current funding policy in twenty eighteen, in May of twenty eighteen.
Okay.
Other questions? All right, I guess.
You had a question.
Bill Brown. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Just to kind of summarize the bottom line, I guess. We levy a dollar amount of eight point three million, eight point four million. And that's based on an estimate of the EAV. And if that EAV estimate comes in, as we expect, we won't get that amount. We'll get about eight point two million. Because it'll be abated to our current tax rate, so the tax rate won't go up. So does that, so that sounds like other taxing bodies in Urbana that like the Park District that are constrained by tax caps can expect about a two percent increase. Is that about right?
Yeah, I so I I'm not really familiar with tax caps because we're not constrained by tax caps. But I believe that it's limited to either five percent or the current rate of inflation, whichever is lower, and the rate of inflation is around two percent.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so the EAV went up by a couple percent, it looks like.
Yeah, you know, and that's hard because we're estimating that's not finalized at this point. But as you said, if if that would, if that levy amount would result in a tax rate that's higher than our desired dollar thirty four nine nine, then what would happen is the county clerk would calculate for us what the reduction needs to be to maintain that tax rate, and that would come out of the corporate levy, the part that goes to the general fund.
Okay. Thanks.
Do we have a Jared to have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll move resolution number twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero five nine R, a resolution estimating the tax levy for fiscal year twenty 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 one, be sent to full council with recommendation for approval.
Okay. Thank you, Jared.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Bill. Is there, are there any questions or discussion from council? All right, I don't see any further, so I asked the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, and then that that motion, I assume, is to send it to to city council with approval? So. All right, so that's fine. We'll go next to the next item on the agenda. It's a resolution twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero six zero R. A resolution accepting a grant from the Lumpkin Family Foundation to study street trees and plant street trees. And we have Scott Test from our Public Works Department. He's our Sustainability and Resiliency Officer. Do you want to make a presentation on this?
Sure, I'll I'll just mention briefly that I'm very happy to report that we received an award from the Lumpkin Family Foundation to study the distribution of our street trees and our vacant tree sites. And to also study any interactions or correlations to that distribution with race and income. Also very pleased that Lumpkin also funded some remedial tree planting that we would do through contract. So when we get to that point where we're going to be zeroing in on where to do remedial tree planting in the right of way. Our Arbor crews will continue on their normal workload and will be able to pay a vendor to do some additional street tree planting. And I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Does anyone on council have a question or comment? Bill Brown?
Yeah, thanks, Scott. Do you know about how many trees twenty five thousand dollars would?
Yeah, we think about fifty.
Fifty trees. And then how do we usually prioritize where we would put trees?
So there's a couple of different pathways. You know, typically, when a tree is removed, an existing street tree, it gets put on a replanting list. Now, there's, you know, a backlog that could take a year, two or three. But but it gets put on a replanting list. There's also a co-op program that the Arbor Division runs. And so that allows folks to actually pay the full cost of the tree planting, of of buying a tree. And then the city will plant it. So that's another, you know, list to get on. So, you know, those are the types of policies that once we do the study, we're going to reevaluate and and just see if they make sense.
Okay, so if if somebody wants to pay for the tree, that consumes staff time. Do they cover the cost of the staff time or only the cost of the tree?
I I believe it's just the cost of the tree.
Okay, that might be worth reconsidering because then, you know, staff time's not equally spread between low income areas and areas that can afford to buy to to fund their own tree replantings. As far as the the work, so the planning will be planting would be a vendor, and it looks like also the spatial analysis would be contracted out.
Correct.
It seems like that could be, I'm kind of familiar with some of the data that would be used. I'm pretty sure most of it's available, public domain, except for the tree sites themselves. So it seems like it'd be kind of ideally suited for a potential grad student project to be when we, will we do like a regular RFP for that? And would we reach out to departments at the O I to to work on that?
So one of the things we want to do with the, you know, the the results and and the data that we produce is we want to put it on a on a public, a publicly accessible website in a way that's easy to view. And the city already has a really wonderful resource through a vendor called Davy Treekeeper. We have, we we have an internal facing Davy Treekeeper view, which the Arbor Division uses to to manage their work and to manage our tree inventory. That same inventory has a public facing view and everybody can find it. The URL is urbana dot my treekeeper dot com. And it's a, it's a really wonderful view. It's it's kind of a, kind of like a Google map. But there are layers of data that the public user can turn on and off. And so one of our our intentions is to, whatever our results are, to put them on that publicly accessible portal. And so we want to use that that same vendor so that that all flows in.
So that vendor would also do the spatial analysis?
Yes, they are very experienced with doing canopy analysis, urban heat analysis. And I think what we're doing, we're actually going to be stretching them and and they're going to be doing some additional things because we want to overlay all of that with with some demographic data.
Okay, and then there was a question during public input about the extra amounts for staff. Is that an in-kind contribution by the city?
Correct. That's just, that's just staff time. You know, staff time that's already budgeted.
And that's not covered by the grant. That's just staff time that is going to be allocated to this project, basically.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all I had for now. Thanks.
Sharice, and then Mary Alice, do you want to also ask a question?
No.
Bill asked my question, so.
All right, thank you. Sharice.
I guess my question that I have because I think about my ward. And what I was thinking about in turn, it was in terms of you, you're talking about racial study. Could you be more specific about that?
Yeah, we're we're going to be looking at like census type data, so census blocks. We're actually contemplating, and I'm happy to take any feedback. We're contemplating looking at two different ways of 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 overlaying race and income data. One is called community development target areas. So this is, I believe this is focused on income. These are areas where the city has taken census data for low income. And they've removed some things like, well, that's low income because it's all student housing and they're not exactly low income. They just don't report any income because they're students. So they've fine tuned census data to really get at what is truly low income neighborhoods in the city. So CDT A, Community Development, Target Areas, that's one layer. There is a different layer that we may also look at, which is the recently developed Illinois Solar For All Environmental Justice Zones. These were a formula that was developed through rulemaking when the state passed in special incentives for look for environmental justice areas, low income, higher racial minority. So we want to see if, we want to look, we want to do the analysis for both of these. If we can get all of that in the scope for the amount of money that we've been awarded. And and just as two different ways to kind of look at the same type of issue. So that that's where we're going with it right now, and I'm happy to take any feedback on that.
Okay, because because the other issue that I was thinking was in terms of because we have a lot of street trees in in my neighborhood. But the other issue that we have, that we can or could tend to have. And I'll I'll speak for just where my area is, where where my mom's parcel is. In that we've got three city trees that in impinge upon our 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 lot that could possibly also mess with the sewage and the pipe, the piping, you know, because of the roots and how they go through. So are you taking those types of things in consideration as well? Because that that's just like another expense. It's something like what Bill was saying when he said, you know, people who can't afford to just have their, to put a tree. You know, it put a tree where they want. Well, the other opposite side of that is as much as, as much as a a tree will grow up and provide shade and 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 nice little, you know, critters all over the place. There's also the issue of infrastructure damage on the the adjacent lot. So are you thinking in term, are you thinking in terms of that as well? Because many folks can't just afford also to just have, you know, if their roots are, the roots of a tree are impinging on their their property and messing with the infrastructure of their of their homes, they can't necessarily afford to to pay for that either.
Well, I'm very familiar with that issue. I just spent a hundred and twenty five dollars on a on a sewer company for that very issue. And 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 he believes that my street tree is directly over where the the sewer line connects with the city line. I I don't, so that's, if I remember correctly, the the sewer line from the house to the street is private property. And so I don't know that we have those in our in our databases. I don't know that we have those mapped. So I'm not sure we would be able to, and but I'll double check on that to make sure that that's the case.
Well, I'm just saying it's something to think about in also regarding, you know, where trees might be be put when you, when you're deciding to put that, is that, you know, it, are are you in a an area that may be socio economically medium to low to medium? And when those trees grow, don't forget that their roots grow out all over the property, the property owners, and that could possibly cause later issues. And, you know, and people may not be able to actually afford that kind of damage for that to be repaired. So it's just something that I I I'm hoping that you also think about that.
Well, I think that's great feedback. And I I don't know if that's some, you know, something that the tree planting crews, the Arbor Crew investigates when when they're, you know, doing new plantings, but I'm going to investigate that with with the crew and and see what their current practice is. But that's good feedback. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
That the only thing that might come into play in that is is to study the 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 root growth pattern of various trees you might select to plant. And some trees probably have more of a taproot. Some trees obviously will spread at the surface a lot more. I don't know which is more preferable, but there you go. Is there any other questions for Scott? Is there a motion then? To move this resolution? Mary Alice Wu?
I'll move to city council for recommendation for approval, resolution number twenty twenty eleven zero six R. A resolution accepting a grant for the Lumpkin Family Foundation to study street trees and plant street trees.
I'll second.
And Bill seconds it. Bill Brown? Other comments or questions for staff or each other? Okay, seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, that passes and goes forward to the city council. All right, next is ordinance number twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero six five. An ordinance amending the Urbana zoning cord map. The Urbana zoning map relating to seven oh two, seven oh four, seven oh six, seven oh eight, West High Street and three oh nine, South Kohler Avenue. This is coming to us as planning case number twenty four ten dash M dash twenty from Community Development. And who will do a presentation for us?
I will. Yes, Kat.
Okay, thank you.
This is a request to rezone five parcels from R three, single and two family residential to R five, medium high density, multi-family residential. The parcels are located at the corner of West High Street and South Kohler Avenue, one block east of Lincoln Avenue. They contain single family homes and one home that has been converted into apartments. And there are no plans to develop the or redevelop the site at this time. This is a future land use map. The comprehensive plan identifies these parcels as residential, described as containing primarily single family residential housing, but may also include a variety of compatible uses such as suplexes, townhomes, civic uses, institutional uses, and parks where they may be appropriate. For reasons outlined in the staff memo, the Plan Commission has found that the request does not meet the rezoning criteria. And city council has the option to approve the ordinance to rezone the parcels or deny the ordinance. The Plan Commission voted unanimously to recommend denial and staff concurs. And the applicants have joined the meeting if you have any questions for them, and I can answer any technical questions for staff.
All right, so we're seeing the the map of where this property is located. And it's a zoning map indicating high density and R two as well. Does does the council members have a question for Kate, Kat, or for the property owners? This, this proposal comes to us with a very significant public input coming from out of the Planning Commission. Do you want to summarize that at all, Kat? We didn't all attend the Planning Commission meeting?
Sure. So we received about twenty to twenty five letters. All were in opposition to the rezoning request. At the public hearing, I believe, four or five members of the public spoke largely in opposition to the request. Two members of the public spoke neither in favor nor in opposition to the request.
Yeah. So any comments, any direction from city council? We could ask the property owners to speak if they wished.
Are they here?
They are, and I've asked Jason to let them in.
Okay. All right, James DeGrove, neat?
Yes, thank you. Yes, sir. My son and I have owned these properties for a number of years now and we are contiguous to high density properties on all sides. we are contiguous to high density properties on all sides. There's a unit on Green Street with has 25 units in it. As noted by one of the commission members, the seven and eight hundred blocks of the State Streets area or the West Urbana Neighborhood Association area is basically all student housing. Although they're zoned as single family, there are no owner occupied, single family homes there, basically, just one or two. And you've just opened up Green Street. To what end? If you're not going to allow people to make use of that street in a sense. Preservation can have some ugly unintended consequences. What's being preserved here? This is mostly a homogeneous, white, upper middle class community of West Urbana. And that people of color have been denied access to access to for generations. And I've personally seen deed restrictions in this area that memorialize forever in the public record that prohibit people of color to own homes there. So over time, these restrictions were outlawed. But the backdrop of this circumstance is that these homes were born from does not merely fade away. And the lack of access and blatant racism got built into the character of this neighborhood over generations. You cannot decouple this inequity from the character. Think about this as you consider what you've been working so long and hard to protect. Higher density gives more opportunity for diversity of race, income, and age in this neighborhood where it's needed most. So let's stop talking about encroachment and start talking about inclusion. What else is being preserved? Certainly not Mother Earth. Old, single family homes are energy hogs. They are leaky and toxic. Transportation and buildings are the two biggest offenders of greenhouse gas emissions. We know that by adding density in close proximity to public transportation hubs, town centers, hospitals, and universities, you can feed two birds with one seed. You're able to build energy efficient structures that house more people in closer proximity, which equals less resource demand. At the same time, you're putting more people closer to the workplace, transit, and services, which saves on vehicle miles traveled. I presume that's why we did Green Street. What was the point otherwise? So the last thing I think this neighborhood needs is to stay stuck in the past. You know, let's build community, let's build diversity, let's build equity, let's build efficiency. Let's build density where this city needs it the most. Let's build a future. The backlash that I've received personally on this, I find discompliment. I've been a lifelong preservationist. I own five or six homes in the State Streets area that are all 100 years old or older. I've invested hundreds, if not millions of dollars between taxes and purchase prices of these in the city of Urbana. I maintain those. I own a building in Champaign that's an old schoolhouse. I'm not against preservation. I live preservation. I live in a 100 year old house myself. The most modern building I live in is my office, and it's 60 or 70 years old. There comes a point when and and this may be a futile gesture, but I believe in going through the process, and hopefully my voice can be heard as this council decides what is the future of this neighborhood? Which direction is it going to go as we go through new planning processes, new comprehensive zoning? Or whatever that is that they're talking about? I wonder how many people of color were on the last one of these commissions that put this project or these zoning restrictions together? How many? There are none. I can think of no black owner occupied, single family homes in the State Streets area. There may be one or two. But I've been in that neighborhood for 40 years now. And I walk around and I look and see who lives there, and I'm not seeing it. You can put all the Black Lives Matter signs out you want in the front yard, but until you start bringing people in that can live there and make it hospitable to them, I don't know. It seemed like a lot of talk to me. So I hope you do consider this in the vein in which it was presented. I don't have any plans for these properties, nor does my son at this point in time. I'm 71 years old. Probably the last thing I want to do in my life is develop something. I'd like to kick back and retire. So it's more of a what's what about my future? What do I leave to my grandchildren? I'd like to leave them a nice piece of property, if possible. And that's that's kind of what the basis of this is. But I don't see that it's incompatible with the neighborhood as it stands. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration. I know it's hard under these circumstances and these times to do what you're doing. And you've got a lot on your table. So thank you for your consideration.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your input. So a discussion then? Yes, Mary Alice Wu.
I'd like to just make a motion so we can have a discussion if that's all right.
Certainly, you may.
I'd like to make a motion that we deny ordinance number 202011065, an ordinance amending your being a zoning map 702, 704, 706, 708 West High Street and 309 South Kohler Street, Plan Case Number 2410M20.
All right, Mary Alice Wu makes the motion.
I'll second.
Sharice Hershey. Second. Okay, let's discuss now. Mary Alice Wu.
So I'm sure everybody knows I'm the representative for Ward One. These four properties, one, two, three, four, sorry, five properties are in Ward Two, which is currently vacant. I do want to speak for a little bit about some of the plans. So right now we are talking about doing a comprehensive plan. The existing comprehensive plan that we have clearly delineates the 800 and the 700 blocks of the State Streets. The 800 blocks from South Illinois to Pennsylvania are in the Lincoln B.C. corridor. And there was a very clear plan in terms of what the comprehensive group thought would be best in those cases. It doesn't go up to Green Street. But the clear line there was Bucy Street. And so R2, single family houses, was going to be on the east side of Bucy Street. I have spoken to some landlords who actually own properties right across the street from these. They do not want to see this rezoned into a higher density. They like the fact that the neighborhood has less density the farther south that you go. It recruits people who want a quieter community. I live on the 800 block, and I have a neighbor who is African American, single single family residence right across the street from me. Not to say that the West Urbana neighborhood couldn't have better diversity, more people within the single family households from all different kinds of groups. It is true that this is a student area, but it is a mixture of student and single family residences. So I don't think now is the time that we should consider reclassifying these parcels when we are just now discussing what the new comprehensive plan is going to be. And the existing comprehensive plan that we have on the books right now clearly states that this is not high density. So those are those are my initial thoughts. I will say that there's been a lot of conversation amongst the neighbors in that area who are vehemently against the rezoning of these properties. But I felt like I had to put a little bit more out there just because we don't have a representative for Ward Two.
Appreciate that. Other commentary? Yeah, Sharice.
Since he brought it up, I feel compelled to say something regarding the diversity of the housing. And I'm aware also of the history of the lack of diversity south of University Avenue. I'd like to know how many African Americans he has living in his properties.
So I guess that's a question for James.
At any one time, I would say they're all students. 10 to 15%, sometimes none, sometimes more. I've been I've been doing this for my whole life. So I can't narrow it. I have I have students from all over the world. I prefer grad students because they tend to stay there longer and they're a little better behaved, but most of the undergrads are in student housing, at least till their juniors or seniors before I ever get to see them.
So your properties
I have property at 402 West Elm in Urbana, which I believe to be the oldest single family residence in the city of Urbana. And a number of years ago, the city had a program where they would loan you X amount of dollars if you would agree to participate in in low income housing, which I did, and I borrowed the money and I still owe the money. It's paid back whenever I sell the property, but I've owned it for 40 years. And any number of different times I've had low income families living there.
Do you are you saying, are you? Okay. All right.
All right.
But, you know, it doesn't make any difference to me.
How many African Americans have you had living in those properties?
I'm sorry, Ms.?
I said, the properties that you're talking about rezoning? What's your diversity within those properties?
Well, my son owns two or three of those properties, so I can't speak for him. I don't know who he had in those properties. The two that are mine, one I just bought last year, and I don't know who's living there. My son, my other son rented rented it out for me, and I don't know who the tenant is. The other one is, I believe, that's at 702, and he did the rental there also, but it's typically been women that have lived there. Just seems one stays and gets two or three others to come in, and then they graduate and it kind of rolls over. So I don't know. I'll find out for you.
Okay.
But I mean, I don't ask that on my applications. I don't ask, you know, the only way I would know is if I went there and
It was just that you that you brought up the fact that historically there there has been very few black folks that have lived in that neighborhood and
Right.
I I'm highly aware of that. But
I just hoping that this next go around, and I'm not kidding myself, I don't think you guys are going to pass this. But the next go around, when when these things are looked at, that people of color are included in the process of deciding, hey, where do we need more housing? How do we get more housing there? How do we get diversity in this neighborhood? How do we provide that access? Speak for themselves. The numbers speak for themselves, I think.
Yeah, is there one might wonder whether there's a difference between diversity and rental properties as opposed to people who are owners of properties in this area? Well, these are all
I would think there is more properties just because of the dollars and cents involved. You know, if I can rent a room for $300 a month to $500 a month, that's a lot different than having to pay a mortgage of 1,500 to 2,500 is $3,000 to $4,000 a month. And the taxes and the things that go with that. So the dollars and cents drive that.
Other questions? Mary Alice Wu.
I don't really have a question. I just have more of a statement, which is out of all of the new properties that I've seen developed in that whole area, I know that the starting rates are $750 per bedroom. So for a two bedroom, that's $1,500 for an apartment. For a four bedroom, that's going to be $3,000 for an apartment. So I'm not entirely sure if that property would be redeveloped if what the clientele that it would draw most likely would be university students. Not to say that's bad or anything, but it would be more of the same that's already in that neighborhood is my point.
Well, either that or young university professors or assistant professors or staff. There's a lot of other people around there that maybe they're close to the university but don't have an affiliation with it. Maybe they want to work downtown Urbana as that gets redeveloped. Again, I come back to this Green Street corridor. Why did we do that if we're not going to let you know, people live around it and utilize it? So, don't know.
Okay. Other comments, questions? All right. All right, so I guess I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on this one.
Dennis, can I just clarify something?
You can.
So this is a motion to deny. So if it's yes, then you're saying it's kind of the the opposite, right? So I just wanted people to be clear in terms of what a yes, no means for this one.
Yeah, so a vote to support the denial would be a yes vote. Phil Brown?
Yeah, I'll just comment that you know, some of these arguments are probably good arguments to make during the next comprehensive plan overhaul. Our current plan is pretty clear about this being R3, and it's supposed to be sort of a buffer between the M R district on Green Street and the R2 to the south. So you know, duplexes are allowed. I guess you could get two four bedroom duplexes on some of those lots. One of them looks pretty small. I don't know if you could get two four bedroom duplexes on that, but there's some allowance for increased density duplexes or townhomes, something like that. You could also combine those and do a plangent development. I think, you know, there's some options there, but going to R5, definitely I don't see being supported by the comprehensive plan as it is.
Okay, I guess Phyllis.
Okay, are we ready?
Apparently we are.
Okay, now, the motion that Mary Alice made and Sharice second, that was for this particular thing and not just for the fact that you were talking about denying this. Am I correct? So when I call the roll this time, it's going to be to deny it completely?
Is that correct, Mary Alice?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Right, so that doesn't go anywhere then. All right, and we'll probably revisit the developments and the zoning of Benny districts near the university as the comprehensive plan is, the new comprehensive plan is created in the coming year. All right. Then the next item of business is ordinance number 2020 dash 11 dash 066. An ordinance approving a right of way license agreement with the Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District. Okay, Justin, are you going to present this one for us?
Yeah, and I don't have much of a presentation, but this ordinance would approve a license agreement between the Sadi Urbana and the Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District for the installation and operation of an underground electric transmission line connecting proposed solar power plant to a hydrogen fueling station at the on the current MTD campus. So as exciting as the the solar farm and the hydrogen station might be, this this is specifically addressing the the power, the underground power transmission line. So that would run along Hickory Street, which is a short stretch of road north of University Avenue. It stopped, license agreement stops at University Avenue because that's actually I dot right of one. And they'll have to get a separate license agreement with I dot for that portion of it. And then this this type of agreement is actually typically just approved with by executive authority by the mayor because it's all underground utility. And we've reviewed and approved this in Public Works. However, since this agreement is with the MTD, it's technically an intergovernmental agreement and requires City Council approval. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Other questions? Mary Alice.
I'm always curious how you come up with the rental fee, the annual fee of $967.20.
Yeah, there is a linear foot fee in the Yeah, there is a linear foot fee in the fee schedule for license agreements for the right of way, so. Uh, so there's a number that, and it's actually adjusted each year, and the license agreement allows us for allows for us to adjust it. Each year to match the consumer price index, so. So the applicant gave us their number. So just the measurement of the length of their underground utility.
So you just plug it into a formula? Okay.
Could you explain, Justin, how it is that the M T D department owns a piece of property? In what is right next to, I guess, a Mosacote, or maybe it's not a Mosacote, it's the, it's our, is it our? Landscape Development Center, and it's not that either, is it?
Uh, the the location of the solar farm is actually on Urbana and Champagne sanitary district property.
Yeah.
So I believe that there's a second agreement set up between the two agencies for the use of that land uh, as a solar farm.
Okay, so and what about the hydrogen collection or storage unit tank or whatever it's gonna be? But can you explain that part?
Yeah, there's a, um, I don't know too many details of it, other than M T D is is working on getting some hydrogen fuel buses. And um, and has submitted plans to the city for for some um, site planned or. Site development for the uh, or addition of a hydrogen fueling station to fuel those buses, so.
Some storage there.
Yeah, yeah. I'm I'm not. I haven't looked at those plans in a while. Uh, M T D would have to to describe that whole, their whole setup there and what's proposed, but. Uh, I believe there'd be some fuel storage on site.
Okay. Bill Brown.
Now I'll move to send ordinance number twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero six six to city council with recommendation for approval.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Will Colbert? Colbert? Okay. Uh, other discussion? Okay, I guess. Yeah, Cherie's.
Maybe it's just the word hydrogen that got my attention.
Yeah.
Hydrogen storage, which definitely got my attention.
Mine as well, but.
What are the safety standards regarding that? How is that going to be? I guess I, that's what I worry about. Is this, is this like underground, like the gasoline stations have? Have underground tanks? Is this is this how? After we. Vote for this. If approving it, if is, how how are they exactly going to store this hydrogen and what are the? Where are the safety factors?
Um, so I guess first I'll point out that this this agreement is specific to just the the underground power transmission line, so. It really, it's. Power fueling the hydrogen station that would otherwise just come from the Ameren power grid. So. So that that's that agreement. Your question about state, I just wonder kind of building safety. Division and and a little bit the fire department too on the safety measures that are put in place, but. Included in that site planner do our building safety plans and. And. Fire hazard plans and things like that, so there are standards in place to protect against.
Okay. Okay.
Guess we'll discover that in the future.
Yeah.
All right, other comments or questions? I guess we could have a little roll call from the city clerk.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes and we'll go forward to the city council. Uh, the next item is ordinance number twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero six seven. An ordinance approving, or oh, we we just did that one. Is twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero six seven, yes, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three dash forty-three. Increasing the number of class R and T dash one liquor licenses. For Baldurata's, Porqueta, and Sicilian sausage. At three hundred South Broadway Avenue, Urbana, Illinois, in Lincoln Square Mall. Mayor, is that something that as Liquor Commissioner, you would like to comment on?
It absolutely is. So Baldurata's has requested an R and T one license, restaurant and tavern license. They're located in Lincoln Square. They currently sell sandwiches. They do not have a liquor license. They want to expand their business into another part of the food court and offer. Beer, wine, mixed specialty drinks and desserts, and this is a license that will allow them to do that.
Okay. Other questions for the mayor? Yes. Jared Miller?
Not a question, but I'll make a motion if Jared entertain it.
Yep, I certainly will.
Move ordinance number twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero six seven, ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapters Three, Section Three dash forty-three, increasing the number of class R and T. One liquor licenses for Baldurata's, Porqueta, and Sicilian sausage at three hundred South Broadway Avenue, forward to full council with recommendation for approval.
And I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Mary Alice. Any conversation? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, that passes and it goes forward to the city council. The last item on our agenda is uh, in a twenty nineteen I dot traffic stop presentation and twenty twenty-one pilot program. Uh, Brian Seraphin, are you gonna be, oh, the mayor wants to speak. Okay, go ahead. She raised her hand.
I just want to introduce this, and I'll turn it over to Chief Seraphin and Melissa Hendrian. I just wanted to let folks know this is a really a two-part presentation. The first is the presentation on the statistics from the twenty nineteen. Traffic stop report. The second is the Urbana Police Department's proposal for really radically changing. Their approach to traffic stops. My goal, as I told Chief Seraphin, was to eliminate racial disparities in traffic stops, and um, he has worked. With his his staff, his team of officers and staff, and they have come up with a proposal that I think. Will get us very close to that, if not achieve that goal. So I'm really happy to to. To introduce this, and I'm looking forward to hearing the report, and really. The most important part of this presentation is the second part, but take it away, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And you've already tried to cut to the chase a little bit, but um, let me start by mayor, council, citizens, officers, whoever happens to be watching this. Um, I just want to say thank you for your patience, first of all. Um, normally this comes out in spring, early summer, and um, twenty twenty has been a bit of a challenge for us on a variety of fronts. So I I thank people um, for their patience. You know, we have been, a- as you've read through the materials in the twenty oh three, uh, when this legislation initially passed, that for sixteen or seventeen years now, we've been reviewing. Traffic stops. Um, I have um, had an opportunity to talk with others from around the state and um. Urbana has clearly, they clearly go above and beyond what we've done here as far as studying this information. The uh, tonight, Melissa Hendrian, the crime analyst, is going to sort of present her report, work through the slides, and we'll. We'll answer some questions and whatnot. Then, as we move forward, I want to make sure that we get a chance to spend a little time in. What the proposal is for twenty twenty-one. As we as we try to move forward, so at any rate, those are, I just wanted to make a couple of quick remarks, and now I will hand it over to Melissa, who. Uh, Jason probably has to have some sharing uh, capabilities of some sort granted her, please, sir.
She should be good to go.
Thank you. I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, so the report was included in your packet, so this will just be going over um, kind of the highlights of what happened in twenty nineteen. This does not include any of the data from twenty twenty. Uh, the data is. An anomaly. Um, we, you know, we've stopped discontinued essentially traffic stops starting in March, um, and it's it's been. Different from what we have done in the past, so this report is only including twenty nineteen data. Okay, so we'll go through um, the sections, the contents that were included in the report, so we'll go over the, you know, generally the number of stops that Urbana Police conducts. We'll talk about benchmarks, disparity ratio, the decision that an officer makes to stop a car. Um, and we can break down the disparity ratios into step stops and non-step stops. I'll consider a new analysis that we did in twenty nineteen, the veil of darkness. Um, we'll also look at the outcomes of stops, looking at citations versus warnings, um, and then more serious things that can occur that begin as a traffic stop. And then I'll turn it over to Chief Seraphin to talk about our pilot traffic stop plan for next year. So the Urbana Police Department, on average, conducts about twenty-five hundred traffic stops every year. This varies year to year. Due to different staffing patterns and, you know, how many our overtime budget for step details, and so this this number has a fair amount of variation. Over the years, um, in twenty nineteen, we conducted three thousand two hundred and forty-five traffic stops. So to tell whether numbers, whether our twenty nineteen numbers are outside of what we would expect based on our our range in the past. We compare generally a five-year average to twenty nineteen, and we look at the standard deviation. And so what that does is it takes the average and it compares it to kind of the spread. Year to year, so our our twenty nineteen numbers were, you know, thirty-two, forty-five, and we're comparing it to the average of thirty-five hundred. So is that different enough that we want to pay attention to it? Um, our standard deviation was four hundred and four, so it's thirty-five, thirty-seven, plus or minus four hundred and four. And so our numbers for twenty nineteen fell within that range, so based on what we've done in the past. That number falls within that, our our Z score, which is our, kind of our indicator, if that is less than one. Or greater than one, or less than negative one, greater than positive one, then that falls outside. Kind of what we would expect, and we want to look at that a little bit, little bit closer. This does not, so this is within our expected range based on the variation that we've seen in the past from our from our numbers, and we'll we'll talk, we'll. Do more Z scores later, but it's helpful to start with kind of a basic one. Okay, so this is the demographics of the drivers that we've stopped in Urbana during traffic stops. This is a number that we know. And then we will talk in just a minute on how to compare it to kind of our baseline or our benchmark of drivers on Urbana City streets, but we'll talk first about. Kind of what the, what our breakdown has been of stopped drivers over the past, looking at here back to twenty ten. And so you can see that of of the total number of stops that we've done. Our our black driving, our black drivers that we've stopped in twenty ten made up about thirty-eight percent. In twenty eleven, that was thirty-four percent. In twenty twelve, that was about thirty percent, and then from twenty twelve all the way through twenty eighteen. Um, it was around thirty percent, so there's not much variation here um, in in, you know, looking at the past five years. In twenty nineteen, that number was thirty-three point six two percent. Asian drivers. Made up anywhere from about eight percent all the way up to eleven percent. Um, in twenty nineteen, that number was a eight, right around eight percent. Hispanic drivers make up about five percent of the percentage of drivers that we stop in Urbana, and then white drivers make up anywhere from forty-seven all the way up to. Fifty-seven percent. Um, this number has quite a bit more variation. So we'll talk more about, you know, I said we'd come back to the Z scores, and here we are. In twenty nineteen, our percentage of black drivers that we stopped was thirty-four percent compared to our five-year average of twenty-nine percent. Our standard deviation, so we're looking at kind of our our range of the past five years, our measure of whether whether this is something that stands out. It's two point four eight percent, so this is significantly, it is a significant change from the variation that we had seen in the past. We stopped fewer Asian drivers, and that is a notable difference. Um, we stopped more Hispanic drivers as a notable difference as well. And stopped fewer white drivers than what we had done in the past, so it tells you that all of our numbers in twenty nineteen, our breakdown of of races that we we made, drivers that we made stops of. Was significantly different than what we had seen um, compared to our five-year average. So then we calculate the disparity ratio, so what does this mean in terms of, you know, are we? Are we stopping more drivers? So we, you know, we're stopping a higher percentage of drivers, but what would we expect to see based on our driving population? Or the the people that are driving in on Urbana City streets? So we know the numerator. We know the percentage race of our stop drivers. This is indicated on every traffic citation or warning that we issue. What we don't know is the percentage race of all drivers on Urbana City streets. This exact number is unknowable. Um, it's not something that we are able to capture with a great deal of certainty, um, so what people have done in the past is they use proxies. Up through the twenty eighteen I dot report that they put out, they used the. Uh, breakdown of the the census, the twenty-ten census, looking at um, individuals aged fifteen and up. They changed the methodology quite a bit in twenty nineteen. Um, we can talk about that later if you're interested, but it's it's quite a departure from what they've done in the past. Our, what we have used, um, and what we had decided to use in, I think it was twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen, um, with council. Is to use the breakdown of race of drivers involved in traffic accidents within the city of Urbana. So this is a better measure um, of individuals that are driving within our city, because about half the drivers that we stop here don't live here. So we have, you know, we've got the university, we've got Carl, we've got, you know, lots of traffic in and out of the city, and so we're not. We're not trying to measure the percentage race of stop drivers compared to the percentage of individuals that live here, because that's not an accurate representation of, you know, our of our population. On city streets. Um, so we'll break it down for twenty nineteen, um, thirty-three percent of our drivers that we stopped were African American. And then when we look at our accident breakdown, um, twenty-four percent. Of our drivers in accidents within the city of Urbana were black drivers, so that gives us an overall disparity ratio of one point three eight. What that means is a black driver is thirty-eight percent more likely than we would expect based on our estimated driving population. To be stopped in a traffic stop in the city of Urbana. Um, so these are are the demographics that I had mentioned previously, um, up through twenty ten, or up through twenty eighteen, I dot used the census figures. Um, that estimated our population as being about nineteen percent Asian, fourteen, fifteen percent black, five percent Hispanic, and sixty percent white. When we look at the accidents, we use a three-year rolling average, um, and that that number is quite a bit different. Um, so from twenty thirteen to twenty fifteen, um, we had ten percent of our drivers involved in traffic crashes, both at fault and not at fault. Were ten percent. Black drivers made up about eighteen percent, Hispanic drivers about three and a half percent, and white drivers about sixty-seven percent. Um, and that number has changed composition um, over the years. There is variation year to year. We use the three-year rolling average to make sure that we're, we're kind of leveling out any of the the big swings, and we're getting a bigger. Bigger number so that we, it it kind of levels out some of these irregularities. But from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, this this number for Asian drivers drops down to eight point six percent. For black drivers, it's twenty-four point four one percent. Hispanic drivers is at five percent, and then white drivers is just under sixty percent. So when we use that as our denominator, then we calculate our disparity ratio, so we can look at this over time. You'll remember a disparity ratio of one point oh means that the driver is just as likely to be stopped as we would expect based on our driving population, so that is. So that is this yellow line here. You can see that there is significant variation by race by year. So starting in, so our purple line here is African-American drivers. This is consistently the highest of any race. It is significantly above the yellow line. In 2010, a black driver was two, or was 111% more likely than we would expect based on our estimated driving population to be stopped in the city of Urbana for a traffic infraction. That number has decreased over the years, but it is still, you know, we still see significant disparity. In 2018, it was 1.36. So a black driver was 36 more likely, 36% more likely to be stopped than we would expect. And then in 2019, that number was 1.38. So a black driver was 38% more likely than we would expect to be stopped based on our estimated driving population. That is in comparison to some of our other racial groups. So you can see that Hispanic drivers have changed over the years. They rep your, represent a small percentage of our stops. So a small fluctuation can result in kind of a bigger, bigger leaps here. And then our white drivers are consistently underrepresented in our traffic stops. So, you know, starting in 2010, a white driver was about 30% less likely to be stopped than we would expect based on our estimated driving population. That number was 23, 23% less likely than we would expect based on our population in 2019. So we did an additional analysis this time and those of you that were around in 20, I think it was 2015 for the, the Traffic Stop Commission Report. They did this analysis then, and then I had a U of I stats class redo it in the, or they started in January. We had some in-person meetings and then with COVID and the university shutting down, we had some online meetings. But they, they set out to replicate this study. So what this does is we're, we're shrinking all of our 3,200 stops and we are taking only the stops where we can separate these into, is it daylight or is it nighttime? And can it be either day or nighttime based on the time of year? So, you know, if I leave for work at six o'clock in the morning tomorrow, it's going to be dark outside. But if I leave for work at six o'clock in the morning in June, it's going to be bright outside. So that would be a time where it could be either light or dark depending on the time of year, depending on the, the date of the year. So this assumes, it's controlling strictly for visibility. So what we're doing is we're, we're binding it by about 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. I don't know that they got on the NOAA, the National Oceanic something website where they could classify every single time, every single stop that we did. You know, whether it was within the bounds and then whether it was a daytime stop or a nighttime stop. We excluded the twilight stops where visibility was a little bit more questionable. But then we, you know, we were able to differentiate stops into, you know, we're, we're controlling for the driving population. This does not have a benchmark. Our, we're assuming that people have the same behavior regardless of the month. So if you come home from work at 5:00 PM, you're going to come home from work at 5:00 PM regardless of whether it's January or it's June. If you, you know, take your kids back and forth to school or activities, if you go to the gym, go to the bars, this is assuming that people have kind of the, the same general behavior regardless of the time of the year. So this is controlling for officer visibility. So we can, if a driver, if an officer is able to discern the race of a driver based on whether there's light outside or not, we would expect to see a different percentage of black drivers stopped during the daytime versus during the nighttime. So results of this analysis indicated that we stopped the same proportion of black drivers during the daytime versus during the nighttime when we're bounded by the, by the times of the year. However, there is still a persistent disparity. So the disparity exists both when officers can see and can discern the race of the driver based on the visibility versus when they cannot. So what's going on? Can we, can we break this out a little bit further and see if there's, there are some answers to these questions? So there is a different, there's a, a step program that we do here. Officers are able to sign up for overtime shifts where the only thing that they're doing during those shifts is, is running traffic. And then we also have non-step stops. So the step stops are in green up here and the non-step are in blue down here. The non-step stops are stops that are conducted while an officer is on patrol. So they are on their regular shift. They are conducting traffic stops as they are able or as, based on, you know, whether they're responding to calls for service or, or what is, what is happening during their shift. So about 30% of our stops are step stops and the rest of our stops are conducted while we're on patrol. There is a significant difference in the disparity ratio between step stops and non-step stops. And so you can see our purple line is black drivers still consistently above the yellow line until 2018. And this is when, those of you that were around will remember with this presentation that we had with Sylvia, we moved the locations of the step stops to be strategically where we had high volumes of traffic, high volumes of traffic accidents and high volumes of accidents that had personal injury. So in 2018, our black drivers in Urbana were 15% less likely than we would expect to be stopped based on our estimated driving population. So this disparity ratio was less than one. A white driver was 11% more likely than we would expect to be stopped and those numbers were very similar in 2019. There's our break where you see the drop start. Non-step stops have a much higher disparity ratio. So these are the stops, these are only the stops that are conducted while officers are on patrol. So you can see in, you know, so it was back in 2010, a black driver was 124% more likely to be stopped than we would expect based on our driving population. This has decreased over time quite a bit, but we are still looking at a, at a persistent disparity. In, in 2018, a black driver was 60% more likely than we would expect to be stopped. And in 2019, that increased slightly to 61% more likely to be stopped than we would expect based on our estimated driving population. So looking at those two together, you can kind of see the, the difference here between our, our step stops here on the bottom. This is just the disparity ratio for black drivers versus our non-step stops on the top. So our patrol stops are here on the top. And this is, this is kind of where this is our, the direction that we're going here. And there was our departure. You can see where, where it dropped below the yellow line. So where are we conducting our non-step stops? We are conducting, so we're looking at a map here. This is a density map. The blue is citizen initiated calls for service only in 2019. Purple are our patrol stops of black drivers. So our, our traffic stops, our patrol traffic stops of black drivers overlaid with our citizen initiated calls for service. So it appears based on, based on this, that our, our stops of our patrol stops of black drivers are occurring in areas that we are spending more time in. So these drivers have a, an increased chance of exposure. So it's not, you know, it's, it's, it's the location. So these are geographically correlated. And then the other point to look at racial disparity is at the outcome of the traffic stop. So once we know the race of the driver, is there disparate treatment? So about half the time, if you get stopped in Urbana, you're going to get a ticket. The other half of the time, you're going to get a warning and then there's a small chunk where it ends in something more serious than a traffic violation. So someone has a revoked license and their car has to be towed from the scene or, you know, we find guns or we find drugs or we find something or somebody has a warrant. These things begin as a traffic stop but end as something that, that is more serious than that. So we can look at the disparity ratio of our outcomes. This takes the guesswork out. We know the percent race of our, of our stop drivers and we know the percent outcomes by race. So by dividing these, it gives us another disparity ratio, but this takes any of the guesswork out of it. So looking at our citations, an Asian driver in 2019 was 8% more likely than we would expect based on the percentage of Asian drivers that we stopped to receive a citation. A black driver was 15% less likely, a Hispanic driver was 3% less likely and a white driver was 9% more likely than we would expect to receive a citation compared to the, the break, the racial breakdown of drivers that we've stopped. Looking at our warnings, an Asian driver was 8% more likely. A black driver was 1% more likely, Hispanic driver 33% less likely and a white driver was right even. Or the percentages were the same. More serious than a traffic violation and I, I don't have this on here. I believe it's 174. So this is a small percentage of all of the, the traffic stops that we do, but we will include these numbers here. The disparity ratio for Asian drivers is 0.29, so much less likely than we would expect based on the race, based on the percentage, the breakdown of stop drivers. A black driver is 94% more likely to have an outcome of something that's more serious than a traffic violation. Hispanic drivers 33% more likely and a white driver is about 40% less likely. When we dig into these, it is included in the report. It is not included in the slides. Most of these are nondiscretionary. So if someone has a warrant, if someone has a revoked license, this is automatically going to elevate to something. There's not, there's not discretion applied here. Okay, so in summary, in 2019, we had a decrease in the number of traffic stops, though this was not notable. And we decreased our proportion of step stops to overall stops. There was a slight increase of disparity ratio with our black drivers. 34% overall of our stops are with black drivers. But black drivers make up an estimated 24% of the Urbana driving population. So our overall disparity ratio of all stops was 1.38 for black drivers. A veil of darkness analysis revealed no statistical difference in the proportion of black drivers stopped when controlling for officer visibility. Our non-step or patrol stop disparity ratio is higher and it's correlated geographically with our citizen initiated calls for service. That non-step disparity ratio is also higher than our overall disparity ratio. It was 1.64 for black drivers. And then at the decision, at the decision point of the outcome of a stop, a black driver is less likely to receive a citation. And that concludes my portion of the presentation. I can take questions now or we can move it to Bryant first.
Okay, so thank you very much. That's a lot of data.
It is.
You crunched it rather amazingly. Do we have people who would like to ask questions? Yes, Jared Miller. Go ahead.
Melissa, I was wondering if you would be able to respond to some of the points that Durole had brought up in his most recent email to us, namely he had asked about considering multiple methods for getting our, our percentages rather than the single, single statistic. Cause as he says, it is just a single viewpoint and there are lots of different ways to, to look at them. And he also asked about separating local residency from non-local stops and see if demographics align. Then, I don't know, have you looked, I, I can keep going on to those. I'm sure you've seen, seen his email. Do you have thoughts about in future analysis, adding any of those things in? And/or his thoughts on, you know, the usefulness of the disparity ratio in general versus just tracking the percentage of folk stops by race?
And so this was, you know, the, the discussion of the benchmark was something that we, we had come to a, a decision with, within council. We use all drivers involved in traffic accidents. However, I did rerun it today and looked at the not at fault percentage. So that's, that's the argument, right? That a not at fault, you know, when, when there is a, a traffic crash, there is a driver that is determined to be at fault and a driver that is determined to be not at fault. And the argument is that our, that a better way to, to measure, you know, equal distribution of individuals on Urbana city streets is looking just at the not at fault drivers. That drops the, our benchmark percentage for black drivers to a little over 22%. So it is not a very large departure from the numbers that we had run with both at fault and not at fault drivers. It would also be interesting, I think, to look at strictly at fault drivers because that would be, you know, a measure of violation, right, of risky or driving behavior. So I think it's instructive to keep it together, but you know, it's welcome to consider it a part as well. Was there, was there another point that you wanted me to directly respond to? We were able to meet with Mr. Cruz earlier last week.
Yeah, yeah. And that's why I think he had, he had sent some of those. I just wanted to make sure that if he had brought those up to you, that you guys were aware of them, because we don't get to talk to you very often. You know, we, I'd be interested if you could follow up with us on, you know, using multiple perspectives as we track this going forward. You know, and what that, what, what that might look like. And then using, you know, a combination of those, of those statistics to, to give, give ourselves a better picture. In addition to also highlighting and tracking the stops just on, just on race by itself and watching that percentage and how that changes over time as well. Because that is another, another way to look at that. I'm sure many of my other more stat intelligent council members could, could speak more clearly to that. But I just want to make sure that his points have gotten across and that we'll get a follow-up from you on, on those points and about how we can watch those stats going forward. Thanks.
Okay, Sharice and then Bill.
Yeah, could, could I see the map again where you had the overlay of traffic stops? And, and if you could zoom it, blow it up a little bit because I really couldn't read like where, where any of that was taking place.
I'm going to need you to share it here.
Where you have that overlay and the neighborhood.
Yep.
Cause I'm, I'm interested in seeing. Yeah, can you? And me putting my glasses on is not going to make much difference. Okay, since I'm not seeing it all that well, maybe you can tell me the big blob in the middle.
Yeah, so this is to, to orient yourself here. This is Vine. This is University. Got Lincoln, Bradley, Colorado, Florida.
So you get calls, the blue areas going from teal to, to like a sea foam or sea foam to a darker kind of.
Yeah. Contrast is not great.
Oh no, I love the color structure. These are the areas where you get the most calls?
That is correct.
From citizens?
Yes.
And then the purple going from kind of lavender into a deep dark royal purple. That's, those are accidents or those are?
Those, that is the highest, those are, those are our concentration of our, of our particular stops of interest, which is black drivers that we stop while officers are on patrol.
Oh, okay. So this is when officers are on patrol. And the, so what is the, 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 um, the lighter purple areas, what do they represent? The little splotches from?
So the little slot, those are just a lighter density. So we, we probably had a few stops at this corner, but not enough for it to be like that, that deep dark purple. So this is kind of like a.
So University of Vine, which turns into Cunningham.
Yeah, so five points. And we would expect this to have a, like, when I, when we look at, this is, we have a lot of accidents here too. This is a really high, a highly traveled road.
And Bradley and Lincoln.
More of a concentration in, in some of these residential neighborhoods too.
But Bradley and Lincoln, I noticed that's also a high, why is that such, such a high density area?
For calls or for stops?
For stops.
And the officers are able to, to make stops while they're on patrol and this is, this is an area where there are lots of stops.
Is this an area, are these two areas, those dark purple splotches? We're talking about Bradley and Lincoln, University of Vine. And then there's another dark splotch in the, the north part of the big blue splotch. Yeah, right there.
Yep.
Are those areas where police are sitting and watching or are they, are they, are they also, is it, is it, what's the, the call? The, you know, where you get most of the calls versus the, oh, I saw you speeding, getting off of the highway or something like that.
So, so Sharice, Bryant here. We'll go, I'll go into this a little bit more later as, as we try to transition to the next program. Essentially, I, I think what the, what we're, what this is trying to at least illustrate is that a lot of these traffic stops are occurring when officers are on patrol and, and it's where they physically are. So while someone is, if they work in a particular beat or if they're in a particular area and they see somebody roll through a stop sign as they get done handling another call, they might address that particular stop sign violation or, well, I am in my beat, while I'm waiting for the next call, maybe I'll sit and watch this stop sign or watch that on radar in this particular area. But it's, it's left to, to, to a degree, a great degree, to what the officers are, can find or what maybe they've heard from complaints and those things. So it's not necessarily their call there for that, that specific question if I, or that specific problem, if I understand your question.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to determine is that because I guess my theory is basically if you're always looking for the negative, you're surely defined it. So what I'm saying is that if, if, if our police, like, posted at certain areas where there seems to be a high violation area?
No, they are not formally posted there.
Okay.
So, so
While they're, while they're patrolling and
While they're out patrolling or if they know that, hey, Mrs. McGillicuddy is complaining about somebody at the stop sign. And this, they might be in that particular area, but no, they're not formally posted there. And then that'll speak to part two of this presentation here in a little bit.
Okay.
Are there other, Bill Brown, yes?
Yeah, thanks, Melissa. It's really great to see all the work you've done and detailed data. I didn't notice. I mean, one way we can also address the disparity issues is to look at the reasons for the stops and disparities. And like, a couple of years ago, when we started the, the fix-it ticket to try to reduce the equipment violations, can't tell if that's actually working. I don't know if there's enough of a sample for that, but definitely in twenty eighteen, it was higher. I think that was when we had started the program and maybe officers were kind of anxious to give out the, to fix it tickets. And might have been making more equipment stops just to give out the fix-it coupons, not a ticket. But it's back down to more about normal, it looks like. But the one that stuck out to me was the license and registration violations were way up in twenty nineteen. About twenty percent of black drivers stops were for license and registration violations. And normally it was closer to ten percent, maybe fifteen percent, the highest year before that. Were you able to drill down at all and try to figure out is that certain age groups or any, any particular reasons why that was higher in twenty nineteen?
I think the, Bill, Bryant here, I'll jump in real fast. I think some of this can actually absolutely be officer-driven as well. And so that's one of the things, if you look back a couple of years ago, when Sylvia was here as the chief, one of the things that we had done was trying to go out and make it to all the shift briefings. Explain what the impact is. And so if one officer makes twenty-five stops for a particular thing, and, and I think this one is, if they don't know that, if we don't tell them, hey, you might be, you know that you're doing this, and that's part of the education process here. So I think that and Melissa might be able to help me out. I think some of that increase was by one or two of the officers who were working maybe a problem area. So I'll let her, if there's anything else you want to flesh out there, Melissa at all?
And so the, the fix-it tickets, we did a hundred and fifty-three of those in twenty nineteen. That has been much lower in twenty twenty. And we can expect that to continue to be an anomaly until after, after COVID. But yes, Bryant is correct, the, the license and registration violations was, was driven by just one or two officers.
So were one or two officers targeting? They were just like looking for license, registration expirations? Is that what it was?
So, yeah, Sharice, what, what normally can happen is most officers will perhaps have a couple of things that they know about. That's something, so it's if a license tag is expired, they might just make that stop. And that's something that they might do. People don't have fuzzy dice anymore obstructing their windshield, but that used to be something that people might stop somebody for. So, yeah, this, this appears to be, and, and this appears to be something that's more along those lines where someone was, that was a particular thing that that officer goes, oh, there's something I, I can, you know, it's against the law, so I'm going to go ahead and stop that.
Okay.
Right.
Mary Alice.
Thank you, Melissa, for putting all this data together. I know it's a big job. I was wondering, in the previous reports you've done, you've kind of disaggregated the traffic issues, community caretaking and the targeted patrol. And I didn't see that this time. Was there a reason why you decided not to include that?
And so, yes, you're correct, that was not included in this. And we're it, it, it seems to be, Bryant, you going to help me out with this one?
Yes, I will gladly. So part of the, part of the issue with that particular, and I think what you're talking about is the motivation for the stop. And we have some data and that is, if I ran, it's always something that the officers struggle with trying to code a particular thing. What's the motivation for the stop? And in a context, it's very like a council meeting, we can, oh, that makes sense in a way, we move on. But when an officer does those, I think it, it sometimes is difficult. So if they, if I don't write, so if I stop them for this issue, is that a, is this a community caretaking role? Or is it a traffic safety issue? And I think some of these weren't defined very well, so we've had some struggle with this. Melissa, you gave me some numbers, I don't know how, because we're not as confident in those as we would like to be. Generally speaking, I think the traffic safety issue was about eighty-five percent of the time. Community caretaking was twelve percent of the time and targeted sort of patrol was only three percent of the time. So it, it just, it seems to be one that we're not as confident in our data as we would like to be.
So I, I was able to find last, the last time this was presented, and in two thousand and eighteen, it was eighty-four, fourteen and two. So at least based on the, if, if we can trust the data, it seems like it's very similar to previous years. The reason I bring this up is because there's a lot of conversation about pretextual stops. And this is where we got that information from, was we got it from this chart. And I, if, if memory serves, I believe targeted patrol was synonymous with pretextual stops. Is that, is that correct?
So it is, it's not quite that, it's not quite that simple. I think generally speaking, yes. So for instance, I dug out an old memo that, that Lieutenant Sanders had written on, on this particular topic. And it was trying to, you, you could have, I guess, the same sort of violation. And if it's, I'm trying to solve a traffic problem, then it's a, a traffic issue. If it's, I'm trying to solve a particular criminal problem in a specified area, then that would be targeted patrol. It may or may not necessarily equate exactly to pretextual. So the idea with pretextual stops, I mean, well, we've had this discussion. And then the final, it could be community caretaking. So we could have a particular issue that might fall under all three, depending on what that motivation is. So it, it's just, I guess, like I said, I think the officers kind of struggle with some of these, with some of that data. But it, it, it's at least similar to what it's been in the past.
So is the idea that you're going to be, you're proposing to stop collecting that data because it's, it's tricky data? Or are you thinking about rewriting kind of how people code those different items?
So I, I, my, we've had some internal discussions and I think it's sort of, it goes to, we were trying to look at, I know at some point, there was some other talk about what the scope of a stop was and we were going to go beyond the scope of that particular stop. So if we stop somebody for expired license plate and we, in the backseat, see a ski mask and duct tape and a knife, we might go, oh, that's interesting, we're going to ask this driver questions. We, we've been trying to buy the, discuss whether or not there's a, is there a better way to kind of drive it? Some of that same, that pretextual discussion that you're, that you're talking about. So I believe the data is still being collected even under twenty twenties craziness. I haven't, I, I don't, I don't know what we're going to get out of the twenty twenty data. So I guess, Mary Alice, to your question is, I don't know just yet. We've been having some discussions about, is there a better way to drive it or drill down to that particular issue?
Okay, and then in terms of the fix-it ticks and fix-it, they're not tickets, right? They're, they're coupons, so to speak. Would those be under warnings? Where would that be classified under?
It would be under equipment, the stop would be equipment violation and then it is only for warnings.
Okay, that, that's what I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Sharice?
I, I, a question that I have is, are the, the the disparate, disparities, do they seem to occur more in when, when there is a citizen calling as opposed to a police officer just happening upon the situation?
Um, so occasionally we will get calls into the dispatch center to report, like, oh, you know, there's somebody that, that I saw that almost swiped me off the road and that's called a, it's a make your own case. So an officer can be called out and then an officer can, can attempt to make that stop. I, that's not collected in the data, though. So I can, I can see how many of those calls that we get, but I can't match it to whether there was a stop that was made from that call.
Okay.
So that is not unfortunately data that I have.
I, I would, I would offer, anecdotally speaking, Sharice, that'd be a very, very tiny miniscule amount. If any of these are sort of, somebody called in to say this person specifically, this red Mustang just almost ran me off the road. Those are very, that would be very small. Now, we might have some, a citizen call who said, people are running my stop sign all the time. Can you help with extra effort?
I've made that call myself.
We might have those kinds of things, but, and, and those would be the things that might direct an officer when they have some downtime on their shift.
Okay, so, so some of these, most of these stops are based on patrol officer in the area and notices a particular violation?
Yes, that's correct, and unless you want to credit this, and that was part of the analysis of why Melissa was breaking down those that are on the selective traffic enforcement program step, where we actually dictate to the officers, these are the areas that you're going to go versus non-step or routine patrol stops when they're out doing their own. Well, I've handled that call, I finished that report, I got an hour before my lunch break. You know, so-and-so's complained about this particular area, I'm going to go work on that, so.
Okay.
LeBron?
Yeah, on the, it's the crash data. The, the disparity for the driving population calculated from the crash data over the past ten years is varied from like eighteen to twenty-four percent, something like that for African-American, black. Using the number of crashes, can you calculate the confidence interval for those? Is it within a couple percent? How much of that apparent decrease in disparity ratios is due to, like, you know, potential sampling error?
Yeah, so that's, you know, you can, you can see kind of where our, our percentage of the drivers that were stopping, at least from, from twenty twelve to twenty eighteen, of black drivers maintained about thirty. Our disparity ratio, however, went down because that denominator increased. And similarly, in twenty nineteen, our percentage of black drivers that we stopped increased, but our disparity ratio went down because the, our estimated driving population are looking at the percentage of black drivers that were involved in traffic crashes also increased. So it was kind of proportional on that. I did not calculate competence intervals, but that is, that is something that I can, I can do. Yeah.
It'd just be good to know, you know, if you, actually, if you do the buyers on that disparity ratio graph that looks like it's going down and you do, do the ninety-five percent confidence based on the sampling from the crash data, it would be interesting to see how many of those overlap, you know, versus a clear difference.
I got a question, Melissa. One of your graphs showed the, the breakdown of stops that were done during daylight hours and during evening twilight dark hours. And it sounded like the, the number of stops of African-Americans was not, didn't change. So it seemed like it, that there was, it sort of disproved the fact that there was implicit bias in the stops based on whether the officer could observe the occupant or whether it was too dark to observe the occupant. Did that, did that actually, is that, am I interpreting that right?
You are, so we're only looking at the stops from like four PM to seven PM. And so we're, we're taking that and we're breaking them, the stops into, is it daylight or is it darkness? So would an officer be able to discern the race of the driver should they be interested in, in that? And if, if they were and if there was racial bias in the decision-making where you, you see a vehicle and you decide whether to stop that vehicle, you would expect there to be a higher percentage of African-Americans stopped during the daytime when there's enough light to be able to see the race of the driver versus during the nighttime. There was not a significant difference between black drivers stopped when you could see versus when you could not see. But the racial disparity was present at both. So it doesn't appear to be an individual decision-making where an officer's visually observing, you know, five white drivers before he or she stops the black driver, that doesn't appear to be what's happening based on that analysis.
So at least in one aspect of police policy or, or practice, but we don't seem to be getting a disparity problem. But it's, I'm just looking for like a grain of hope, perhaps, in the rather difficult field of problems that we are trying to sort out.
Yeah.
So I don't know, just, just noticed it, I guess, it just, it struck me as being rather curiously nice, perhaps.
Yeah, it doesn't appear to be individual officer decision-making. It appears to be based on where, where officers are spending time, either responding to calls or doing patrols. And that's, that's the location that they're making the stops. And so that'll maybe be a nice bridge into our part two here, if no one else has any questions.
Okay, and maybe we can make the bridge.
Diane has a question.
Well, Diana said, but also Jared has got a question, so let's.
I was, I was just going to say, if you want a grain of hope, I think we should move on to part two because we do have a radically different approach to traffic stops in Urbana. And then if people have questions, going back to the twenty nineteen study, we can always go back to that. But I want to make sure folks, we, it's nine forty-eight and I want to make sure you all have enough time to, to hear what Sarah and Melissa have to say about part two.
Yeah, Jared?
Just a quick question on that night stop situation. If an officer is following a vehicle and runs a plate, are they not able to see the racial composition of the driver through what they pull up on their screen if they run a plate?
Secretary of State does not collect information on race drivers, is that correct, Bryant?
That is correct.
So they don't, they don't see, I mean, they can see a name, no?
Yes, to be, you'd be the name of the registered owner, I suppose, whether that's exactly the driver or not. But no, there's, there's no, there's no racial data on the, on the Secretary of State response.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're going to, we're going to transition and we're going to bridge. So as Melissa started to, to work on some of these numbers back in the summertime, I, I, I formed a little working group of officers. And we had detective, patrol, white, black, male, female in, as part of this small little working group. And we, we, we kind of decided that we needed to sort of reexamine this. Let's, let's, let's take a, maybe a different approach. And I said, one of the interesting things is, at, at least for me, and I can remember this started a couple of years ago when Melissa started to use the geography and the calls for when Melissa started to use the geography and the calls for service and the traffic stops and sort of those heat maps and overlaying those, that that's where this started. And then when she has now done the math with regards, or not her, I guess, thank you to the university students, but with regards to the veil of darkness and how that, there was no statistical difference on either side of the twilight. The base disparity ratios still exist, but there wasn't anything beyond. Um, and then we looked at, when we discussed the, the STEP details and you look at that and how the disparity ratio for the STEP details over the last couple of years, when we were much more intentional about where we put the selective traffic details. When we, when we, when we took that all into account and remembering that the primary purpose of traffic stops is for traffic safety, which, when we took all that in account, remembered the primary purpose, what we've decided to try for 2021 is to use the STEP model for all of our traffic enforcement efforts in 2021. So, um, we would just be using, so there's data out there that would say this is where the crashes occur. These are where the high volume is, this is where the personal injury accidents occur. That's what we want to try to do is we want to try to use these STEP details as a model. As we had come to this in our little group, we were very proud, at which point somebody immediately after the group says, well, you know, Fayetteville, they did, they did some Google work and by God Fayetteville, North Carolina had done something, some similar analysis. And what Fayetteville, North Carolina did was, or what they learned in theirs, and I have not read the entire study. It's beyond my sociology 185 stats class abilities, Mary Alice, to remember all, all of this stuff from way back in the day. But, but they, they did, they learned some things. Number one, it was a, they decreased their disparity ratio in their traffic stops. And number two, they decreased traffic crashes. And, and then number three, there was no significant change in any kind of a crime rate. So the proposal is that we would be using, again, that STEP model for all of our, our traffic stops. Um, we had used, we had made presentations, I've been to all of the shift briefings already, and we started this learning process. This is a dramatic difference, a vast departure from how we've done this traditionally. But what we want to do is remember that we're using traffic safety as our primary functioning and we're gonna function here, and we want to use traffic data, that crash data. Just like we did, if it works for steps, we believe it should be effective when it comes to our routine traffic during the time. As, as the memo had said, which was quite an effort with different people having different parts into it. So hopefully I read cleanly by the end. But one of the, 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 the questions that we wanted to ask for, or one of the issues we had left over was, well, what do we do if something happens right in front of us that's not in this particular zone? And that's when, and we're, we, well, if this is, if I say significant traffic issue where there's a life-safed, life, safety, danger issue, we still want the officers to address it. So we talked about things like, for example, Goodwin and Fairview. And somebody rolls the stop sign at 3:00 in the afternoon and almost hits two little girls that are getting ready to cross the street, and the parents and the teachers are pointing at the car and the officer happened to be sitting nearby, could they act? Yes. We want them to act, we don't want them to simply disregard. But if it's 3:00 in the morning and they're at Goodwin and Fairview and somebody rolls a stop sign as they're having a cup of coffee, it's not in a traffic zone, they can't stop that car for that infraction. And so that's, that's just a very quick sort of summary about this. I know that tonight, and in briefings and in other discussions about this, there's been a lot of discussion regarding statistical analysis. What denominator do we use? Enrolling averages and this average and study this? And, and I understand those things, they might help us perhaps to a degree. But the bottom line is that we're disproportionately stopping our black drivers in Urbana. And how do we change that behavior? And we do it by looking at where the officers are and let's move them for their efforts to areas that we've designated, just like we do in STEP, in our STEP patrol. So that's the short version of the model. And again, as, as the mayor has said, this is a vast departure from how we've done, done our traffic enforcement in the past. So with that, I will let some questions, let, let us take it over.
Sure, thanks very much. Well, I guess the mayor will start.
I just want to also remind, or this is also consistent with our commitment to Vision Zero with an emphasis on how do we make our streets safer for pedestrians and bicyclists and drivers? And if our traffic enforcement efforts focus on areas where the traffic accidents are occurring and crashes are occurring, I think we're going to make our community safer for everybody involved. So, so this is all gonna come together, I think, the way it should.
Bill Goldberg?
Chief, I appreciate it. You know, I think it's an excellent idea. Part of traffic safety is communication, the public information aspect. Has there been any idea of when you identify the high-crash areas, heavily message those neighborhoods that they know that, that a certain intersection, we'll just use Lincoln and Bradley is a, is a, is a high-crash area, and somehow message the community that, that they're, that they have entered into a high-crash area? And they would expect to see more enforcement at that location as opposed to some other random location in Urbana?
Um, so I, I don't know if I have a, with regards to that specific area, like you're entering a particular traffic zone. There has been some discussion about, well, do you release the zones and not release the zones? And I'm not necessarily against, these are the 15 areas throughout town. And truthfully, I think they might change a little bit over time. But they're areas that you would sort of expect, where we have intersections, where we have higher rates of speed. And I don't have, I don't, Melissa might be able to give a little bit more on this, but and, and I think even tonight's presentation will get some publicity as sort of how we're doing this. Truthfully, I'm not sure if Lincoln and Bradley is actually one of our, there actually is, I don't know.
I just use it as an example. I'll, I'll go back to five points, okay? I'll, I'll use Cunningham and University. Regardless of whether I'm an Urbana resident, a Champaign resident, or I live in, you know, Downers Grove, and I, and I'm a visitor to, to Urbana. If I, if I approach five points, I probably would want to know that I'm approaching a high-crash area just for my own safety, so I could be a little bit more vigilant and maybe alter my, my own driving practices. Just, just a thought.
Okay, thank you. Mary Alice?
Uh, thank you, Brian and Melissa. It's pretty exciting to hear some new innovative ways of addressing the situation. So thank you for all your time that you've invested in gathering input from a variety of people. One of the things that really changed in my time since city council is that when I first came on board, I think our disparity ratio is about 1.64. Um, and when the STEP stops were reevaluated, it was exciting because all of a sudden our disparity ratio really was cut in half in terms of what it was before. Um, so that was really a great step forward, but of course it didn't solve the problem. Um, and so utilizing something that's worked in the past, which is basically concentrating the STEP stops in terms of where the accidents and the traffic issues are, hopefully will rectify some of the issues that we've been having, the persistent issues that we've been having. So, so that said, is, is there a plan? Um, I know Melissa, I think the first time you and I sat down together, we looked at some traffic accident data and you said, hmm, I wonder why we still have stuff over here, and it had to do with construction at one time. Um, so obviously things change as there's detours and reroutes. I think Washington was shut down for a little bit, Vine Street's been shut down. How frequently are you planning on evaluating the accident data so that you can recalculate the STEP areas?
Um, so we've talked about it a couple of times, it'll probably be at least quarterly. Um, so if it happens that, you know, we have, we have a high concentration of officers out on High Cross and then our, you know, our crashes move over to Windsor or something. So if people start taking alternate routes or if people become safer where they are, then perhaps we can, we can reallocate. Um, this will be, you know, fluid and based on the data. Um, so we'll be able to take our, take our crash data and reallocate as necessary.
Okay, and how often do we, do we do that quarterly now?
Um, we, well, right now I'm doing it monthly, but we're, I think, discontinuing STEP for a little bit. So I'll, I'll get an email from the, from the sergeant that, that sets the, like, posts the overtime and he'll say, hey, can you, can you run what we had last October? And so then I'll run what we had last October and then he'll use that to, to demon, or to, to see where we should put the steps this October.
Okay, all right. Brian, the example that you gave was a pretty cut and dry example. You know, there's two kids sitting in front and you're gonna blow a stop sign, you might hit them versus it's 3:00 in the morning and you roll through a stop sign and there's nobody around. Um, of course, it's gonna be more challenging when you, when you get into the things that aren't as black and white. Um, so have, have, what kind of guidance have you given the patrol people in terms of how to discern what is a public risk here? It's not hitting people, right? We all agree that hitting somebody is, is definitely a public risk, but there's, there's variants of that.
So that's an excellent question, and that's, we're still working on that. So matter of fact, even we've had some internal discussions. And I, I don't know that we've come down to an exact definition that we're all happy with. So just to sort of, matter of fact, last week as we, as I was going to all the briefings, was to sort of lay this concept out. Let me start with this easy one, if you will, to, to, you know, to say, okay, here's the, here's the continuum, everybody kind of understands this, and now we're going to move, I guess, to the more difficult ones. I will tell you that it is my, it is my intention that there shouldn't be tons and tons of these because that's gonna be obvious, the next question is it, well, okay, so of the ones that were outside of the traffic zones, what are those numbers like? And, you know, and what were those for? Those should be extremely small numbers. I don't know exactly what that might be. I will tell you that we, what was it, Melissa? I think we make eight to 12 stops roughly a day, or we have. Um, I will tell you that, you know, so if we stop 3,600 people in the, it was that's 300 in a, in a month. For instance, in COVID, back in March, I think we went from 300 normally to like 30 stops in the entire month. I would expect that this to drop, this should be for significant traffic safety behavior issues. And to the point that there's, that if, if some, in my opinion, there better be a traffic ticket assigned, we're not gonna do this, and then give a warning, that these should be significant. And I don't know that I have a, a solid definition just yet, Mary Alice, for you.
So your plan is to roll this out at the beginning of 2021, is that correct?
Yes.
So in the next six weeks, seven weeks, somewhere around there?
Correct. Sharice?
So how are you going to determine where you're going to be putting officers to, you know, patrol particular bad stop, accident-prone places?
Um, so what I can do is I can, I take all of the, the accidents that we have in the city and I plot them on the map. Um, and so similarly to that, that heat map that we did before, I can do that with accidents. Um, and then I can do that again with personal injury accidents. Um, and then I can flag just little street segments that, that have a high, like, you know, the, the, when we did this, I did an example map and I've got like 15 segments that have 70% of all of our accidents. Because it's, you know, it's on highly trafficked areas, it's on, you know, five points and, you know, some of the, the ones that you would expect. And so those will be the, the stop zones then, that officers will be able to run traffic or make stops in those zones.
Well, and I ask because I'm, I, I know as, it was sometime last year when, when I was having an issue watching people just basically run the stop signs at Kohler and Fairview in, or was it Lynnview and Fairview? I mean, people just wouldn't even hardly stop. And myself, because it seems to be like a low-lit area, and I had talked to Brian about this. It's like I, I, I would drive in that area to take my mom to get her hair done and to go get her mids. And it seemed like every time, it wasn't a place, it wasn't a route that I took frequently, but practically it seemed every time there, I would witness someone running the stop signs there. And so if, and I, and, and I, I believe Brian did put, put someone there just, to slow that down. And there's been a couple of times in the dark where I've almost hit people because they just, they just walk, you know, and I don't see them because, and it's, it's come very close to, to that kind of issue. So if a citizen calls and says, for example, like I did, it says, we're having problems with people running these stop signs, would that be a, also a, a reason for you to, to, to specify where police will be located?
The, the, the short answer is no.
Okay.
That's the short answer because that's, that's what we're trying to control for. So we've had some of these internal discussions and we've already warned the mayor that, because Sharice, it's not just you, but I've gotten emails from others on the council who have said, hey, or citizens who said, hey, I've got it, I've got something that, can you help?
I did it because so many people came to me and said, you know what? Nobody's stopping it, it wasn't just me, but it's like, yeah, I've noticed that, so that's why.
So I, I think, I think some of this speaks to, we've talked about different ways that we might have to be a little more creative and be smarter about how we do certain things. So whether there is something even like if there's a, if there's, if we think maybe perhaps people aren't seeing it or there's a lighting, or is there an environmental factor? Can we, can we bring public works in or whomever that might be able to say, can you help us with this? There's a, you know, so there's an issue, the presence of a squad car makes everybody's foot come off the gas pedal. I've been doing this 26 and a half years, my foot comes off the gas pedal when I, to this day. So there's, just by presence, we can have, we can have an impact. The city of Urbana, the Public Works Department has a speed trailer and we work with them to try to get it dispatched to certain areas. So if we have a particular issue on, hey, they're speeding in this area, sometimes people don't realize what's happening even. And so we put the trailer, the speed trailer out and it might sit there for a week or two. So I think there's some other ways that we can try and address some of these concerns without simply making traffic stops and, and, and then writing warnings or, or tickets.
Okay.
Okay, Bill Brown and then Bill Goldberg?
Yeah, thanks. I think this is a great discussion, I think, especially that last point Sharice made. Part of the Vision Zero strategy is, is the data inform locations of traffic enforcement and things like that. But also it's, part of it is anticipating potential crash locations that you don't really have the data on yet. And you can anticipate those by citizen complaints, post-calls, and, you know, the, the type of things that Sharice and the chief were talking about. So I appreciate that a lot that that's being taken into consideration and there are alternatives to dealing with that because a little bit of enforcement isn't gonna cut it probably even. You know, if, for example, speeding on Cottage Grove, you can enforce it for a while, but once you stop enforcing it, it'll start up again. So there really needs to be some strategy there to, to slow traffic that doesn't involve enforcement. And I'm sure other places are like that too. So I'm, I'm encouraged by this whole plan, I think it's the right direction. Hopefully officers can, can differentiate that type of situational awareness where, you know, somebody may make a minor infraction because they have good visibility and they can see, you know, nobody's coming versus somebody just blowing through a stop sign without even making an attempt to slow or something. And maybe one example you could give them is if you're riding your bike, you kind of do that anyway and, and hope you don't get the ticket because, I mean, it's a lot more effort to stop and start on a bike than it is in a car. So you tend to slow and if no, you know, if you have good, good vision in all directions, you just go on through. And in Urbana, half the time the people at the stop signs, even if they're waiting there and you're waiting for them to go, they'll wave you on through anyway. But, you know, I think this kind of common sense approach, hopefully people will get it. But I, I definitely think this is the right direction. But I, I definitely think this is the right direction and should help alleviate some of the disparity.
Bill, I, I think you're right. I think the stop signs is a, if you ever need something to do, somebody to go watch a stop sign for a while. Very rarely is there a complete succession of movement at a stop sign. So back 20 years ago, if I was running traffic, I would, you could really watch a stop sign and you'd get sort of a flavor of, okay, what's, what is exactly, at what point am I going to stop somebody? It's just similar to like speeding tickets, you know, I, we don't want the officer stopping and writing tickets for 33 in a 30. And so, you know, a similar sort of analysis applies with a, with a stop sign even. So yes, I understand.
So Bill Coldbrook, you had a question?
Yes, this is for Melissa. You plot a lot of data. Do you also plot driving under the influence of alcohol and driving under the influence of drugs for the city? And you had mentioned crash data. You know, there could be maybe a low frequency of property damage crashes in a certain area of the city, but of those crashes, there may be a high percentage of some sort of impairment, which would obviously drive enforcement as well.
And so it's lower than you would expect DUIs. We, so DUIs resulting from a traffic stop where somebody is moving and we stop them for an infraction. And all of last year there were 21. However, the DUIs is higher than that because we also, we get calls often from like somebody who's passed out behind the wheel and steak and shake drive through and some of those things. So yes, it's plottable, but it's a, it's a small number.
Thank you.
Jared.
Um, so I've got a couple of different questions. Chief, the first one that I've got is about the pilot program. And we often say pilot for two reasons. One, because we don't know what we're going to do with it. We're testing something out and we don't know exactly how it's going to turn into a real program. So I take it this is kind of a test for a more formal policy that will become a part of traffic enforcement itself?
Yes, I, I, we're not, we are using our best guesses based on Melissa's data and what has happened over the course of the years to sort of say, we, we believe this is going to be effective. We may have to tweak some things. We may want to add some other things. So at this point, that's sort of why I wanted to say, hey, it's a pilot. It's brand new. Let's see how this goes and then we can adjust along the way.
So that, that being said, what portion in the pilot's phase do you perceive that these, that this program will take up of traffic enforcement duties that officers have while on patrol?
I'm sorry, could you ask your question again, please, Jared?
The pilot program, if I, if I'm, I have, you know, 12 to 12 on Tuesday or six to six or whatever, whatever my shift happens to be, and I'm, and I'm on patrol in the car from, you know, for eight hours of that, of that shift I'm scheduled to be on, what percentage of a given amount of time that I'm going to be out rolling, am I participating in this pilot program? Does that make more sense that way?
Yes, I, I think you understand. We're not dictating any sort of percentage. I will tell you, there are times when the officers, especially in the hot months of summer, are going call to call and are rather busy and they don't do, they won't have time for, for traffic. This is for when they have downtime and have elected to say, listen, I've got time. I've caught up on my open cases. I've got all this done. Now I'm going to go back up into this particular area and work at five points because I've already worked three crashes there this month and I'm tired of it or whatnot. So we're going to give them the zones to work in, but we don't dictate you have to spend 10% of your shift or whatnot because there are times when that's effective and then there are times when that's, they just couldn't hit, hit a particular mark.
So another way to say it would be then, if you're, you know, and I know that, you know, being out and rolling around, it's kind of the last thing you do. You know, you get a ton of other things probably to do. You're responding to calls, you're doing paperwork, et cetera, et cetera. Just being out and roll, roll, rolling on the streets is, is like you said, the lower, lower priority of, of those things. So another way to say it would be if they are out rolling, pursuing traffic enforcement, is this going to be the only kind of traffic enforcement that they will essentially be participating in?
If I'm understanding your question correctly, the answer is yes. This is where they will make, this is where they're, with their doing traffic enforcement in these zones, this is where they will do it. In, in the zones identified by Melissa.
Gotcha. Um, the reason I'm asking that is because I don't know if you saw, did you read Durrell's letter that he sent, I think, last, last night before the meeting?
I, I got it, I got it today and gave it to Melissa later today even. So I did see his, correct, yes.
Okay. So I'm asking that because he brought up something that isn't addressed in, you know, it's not specifically addressed in, in the memo and in this, in this concept. And that was protectual stops or investigatory stops and how those play into this model. Before I ask the questions that he asked in there, how do you have a feeling for how those are going to play into, into this model?
So I'll speak to a couple of different things here. Number one, if we, however, maybe wonky the motivation data is, as was pointed out earlier, still 85% of the traffic stops are conducted are by, are through, are for traffic safety type issues relatedly with regards to the, the protectual stop. So some of the discussion that we're having is, somebody might say, well, I'm going to stop a car for no plate light because I suspect they might be involved in narcotics activity. Okay. And so, well, let's, we're going, what we want to do is no, we want the officers to stop them for narcotics activity. If you, I do this, I do this, I do this, we develop probable cause or reasonable suspicion, which is a lesser standard, you can make a temporary detention to, to do that. And that is, is a violation of a criminal code. Okay. So somebody robs the bank and the red Mustang is speeding through town. We can, we can conduct, we can stop that car, but it's not stopped for a traffic violation. It's stopped for robbing the bank, even though it's on the highway or on the city streets with the lights flashing. And so the idea is we would like, and again, this I think has some of the details that I want to try to, we want to try to hammer out a little bit better, but the idea is if you're stopping someone for a criminal violation, then stop them for the criminal violation as, as opposed to some sort of pretext.
And, and stopping for a criminal violation would be of at least a moderate, you know, the reasonable suspicion or the probable cause reason would have to be evidence in order for that stop to take place.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And I know that we're, we're talking about, you know, enumerating some of this stuff into something, you know, this is kind of like a, a broad scope and we're going to have something more specific. I'm assuming we're going to see before this program rolls out. Is that your impression?
With regards to the specificity, I don't think that I've gotten far, far enough along to determine whether or not what was going to go before the council. We discussed even like an FAQs kind of thing that even with the officers, hey, this is what we are planning. So I hadn't gotten that far yet.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I know we don't have it now. I'm saying, are we going to see it again? Can we see it again before it goes live, if you will?
So I guess that'll be, I guess we'll have to have a, have a discussion with the mayor and we'll, we'll figure that out. I don't know that I know the answer for that right now, Jared, with regards to specifics. I don't think it would be an issue, but we're going to try to, I got to get it together. So I'm not opposed to it.
Okay. I just think it would be, I mean, obviously it's going to be important for the officers to understand what we, what we've just discussed and, you know, needing to have that reasonable suspicion and probable cause for stopping vehicles and not using a traffic, you know, a minor traffic violation as a pretext to search for further crimes. So that was one of the things Durrell had brought up in, in his letter. And the other one that he had brought up was how, you know, we have that small percentage, but it still exists of traffic stops that turn into something more than that. And he had asked, and I'm not sure that I've seen it, perhaps it's there, perhaps it is not, the policy on searches of vehicles when, when people are stopped. We have a policy on the UPD page about what citizens can and cannot do when they're stopped and a search has been requested of them, but not if an officer hasn't met the profile of, is it reasonable suspicion to search, to search a vehicle? What's the, what's the bar they have to meet?
There's always probable cause unless it's like weapons and we can, then it's reasonable suspicion. So, but.
Okay. So it's probable causes is the line at which an officer stops me and says, Mr. Miller, I have probable cause to believe you have X in your car, which is legal. I'm going to search your vehicle. Would you please exit the vehicle?
Is that, I'm sorry, was that a question or?
Yes, yes. That probable cause is what I need as an officer to tell a citizen, you need to exit the vehicle because I'm going to search your vehicle now.
Yes.
Choice, I'm, I'm doing this.
So yes, that is, that is one way. There are also other, there are other avenues, I suppose, that that's where the, that's where consent search comes in as, as well.
Okay. Well, and that's what Durrell had brought up in his, is, you know, what is the difference? Do we have it clearly delineated to citizens what their rights are either through policy? Or do officers communicate that to citizens as, you know, I'm asking to you,
Sure.
citizen to consent to a search. You do not have to agree to do this. And that's a different situation than when an officer has a probable cause to do so and they don't need permission to do so. They can do so by right.
So we have, yes, that's correct. So when officer, listen, we've got this, that or the other. Here's what I'm asking tonight and people do say no. So, you know.
So do we, do we have a specific policy on consent search in?
There, there's just, there is a policy on searching. I couldn't tell you exactly right now what the exact details were with regards to consent or what, what the exact verbiage is in, in it right now.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm just bringing, bringing it to mind because when we're thinking, you know, you made a large point of, you know, you know, one of the biggest ways that the UPD interacts with citizens is through traffic stops. It's probably, it's not, if not, it is the biggest way, right? That we have contacts between officers currently and citizens.
I don't, Melissa might know that off the top of her head, but you're right. It is one of the biggest ways and that we interact. Yes, yes, sir.
So, you know, we're talking about community police relations and things we can do to improve that. And as we're thinking about, you know, what we can do specifically, you know, this is a holistic, I think it's more holistic than even it's described in, in the memo in trying out this pilot program. So, you know, I'm just trying to go into some of the things that happened in that, which Durrell had brought up in his letter. And, you know, if we're looking for a positive way to do that, being as informative as possible about a consent search might be a really good policy to enact, to enumerate, to put on, you know, to, when we're looking at our policies and how we write them, you know, an officer being very upfront, being very, you know, straightforward to citizens saying, I'm, I'm asking to you to consent to a search. You do not need to consent to this search. Here are your options at this, at this time. Here's what I can do if you say no. And just explaining that to people, I think, would go a long way so that they don't feel intimidated, they don't feel fearful of the interaction.
I, I think that's absolutely true. And I think one of the things that I preach here is education in all different ways, that, that, hey, we stopped you today because of this, outside of even traffic stops. Hey, I'm here knocking on your door today because of, we got a complaint about noise in the dog market. Whatever it is, the more education, the more information we can provide the citizens, not always, but generally speaking, the, the more cooperation and compliance we get.
We are approaching 10:30. You may want to extend the meeting if you want to have further dialogue or if we feel like we've covered the topic pretty well this evening and want to bring it, the discussion to a close, it could be a good time to find out.
That, that was the extent of my comments. I had just about gotten through it. So if there are others, then we'll need to extend. Thanks.
Okay. Yeah. So it was a pretty, pretty excellent discussion. Totally, really. Yeah. Diane Marlin.
I'm happy to bring this to a close. I would encourage the public to read Chief Seraphin's memo. It's, it's brief, but it is going to be a radically different approach to traffic stops. And we, we, you know, we, we've talked a lot about addressing systemic racism in, in our communities. And what we've seen in traffic stops and looking at them through a different lens is that our system of making stops was itself racially biased because it was based on location of stops and largely linked to areas where there were high calls of service. So if you're going to change systemic racism, you change the system, you change what you're doing. And that's what this proposal is. It also shifts the focus from questioning individual officers motivation. And that's where a lot of the focus was, is why are these stops being made? You know, what's the reasoning behind it to, to, to the true, much of the true reasoning behind the disparity ratio? And that is the location of the stops itself. So, so this is an example of, of really getting at the system that's creating the racial disparity. And I, and that's why I'm extremely, I'm, I'm confident this is going to make an enormous difference in, in these numbers. So I also want to acknowledge that this was officer driven. It was officer generated. And I want to thank, we didn't actually mention the officers involved who, who worked on this plan. And I think they deserve credit for, for doing this.
Okay. I guess that's my cue.
You have three minutes to do that.
I'll be fast. Deputy Chief Searls was involved in this, as was I was and Melissa. But we had Officer Sarah Lynx, Sergeant Corey Coker, Detective Rich Coleman and Officer Seth King. So this was this small group that kind of had multiple meetings. And I don't know if we ever met for fewer than two hours. So thank you to them.
They put a lot of thought into this, a lot of work, and then it, it, it is going to, it's going to make a difference. I'm really confident. Thank you.
I think on that high note, we can thank everybody for participating, good discussions tonight. And with that, I'll call this meeting adjourned.